Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Come to the Monday, August 19th, 2019 Board of Selectment meeting. We just had a site visit at the new high school athletic field complex where actually the boys were practicing football, so it's in use, absolutely gorgeous facility, that there will be a ribbon cutting event for on the 27th. So I really encourage folks, if you have a moment, take a look at it. It's beautiful. The basketball courts are gorgeous as well. So, we're just back from that, and if you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, which is September 8th to September 15th, 2019, and Doug Brown is going to read that.
Proclamation. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12 minutes, and 121 people die by suicide each day, and whereas 20 veterans die by suicide each day, and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for Massachusetts residents aged 15 to 44, and the suicide rate on the Cape and Islands is 1.4 times higher than the state average. And whereas suicide is a tragic and disruptive event for families and communities, it's estimated that annually there are 6.3 million lost survivors who have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas suicide is a public health issue and a community concern, and through increased education and awareness of the issue, a great number of suicides can be prevented. Therefore, we, Megan English-Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Susan L. Moran, and Samuel H. Patterson, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby officially designate the week of September 8th through the 15th, 2019, as Suicide Prevention Week in Falmouth.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's a sad bunch of statistics right there.
Yeah. Thank you. Recognition? Mr. Brown? Do you have anything for recognition this week?
I have a couple of announcements I would like to make. One is the Sea Education swizzle I attended this past week, and it was interesting learning about their programs. They have a lot of new programs, a lot of them tailored to college courses, but also programs that are tailored to just people that want to learn how to go to sea and interact with that. There's a nine-week course right now that is not full, and if people wanted to fill it up, they have to apply before September 2nd. I'm hoping we can get some local foundations involved to maybe sponsor some Falmouth kids to go. A lot of the people that go to this are from all over the country. We have this great resource here in town, and I don't know if everybody's really aware of it, so I just wanted to mention that tonight. So you can go to Sea Education and look it up, and it was very interesting. There's a course that goes for three weeks in Woods Hole, learning the maritime important stuff, and then six weeks underway from Woods Hole to the U.S. Virgin Islands. Students will receive any, no academic credits, but will offer an opportunity to complete summary portfolio. So, I mean, it looks good on your resume, and it's a great team-building opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Did you have another announcement?
I did have one other thing. My childhood friend Floyd Black has been missing now for a couple of weeks, and I hope people will just keep an eye out for him. I don't know what could be happening, but he's a 61-year-old guy with red hair. He's having a little bit of memory problems with Alzheimer's. So if you could just keep an eye out, if anybody hears or sees anything, please let us know.
Yeah, a lot of pictures of him on Facebook and on the police, the Falmouth Police Department Facebook page, so there's been a lot of efforts of folks looking for him. So if people just familiarize yourself with what he looks like and the story behind it, you know, definitely a member of our community that needs some assistance.
His daughter and family have been operating his Facebook page, so if you look on Floyd Black on Facebook, you'll see the story. And the last thing I could mention, if I could, is next Saturday is the Bands for Badges concert out at the Fairgrounds. It's going to be a great event. Plenty of tickets for sale, and we got six, seven bands out there. It's an all-day event. Kid-friendly, the first part up until 7:30. We're going to have a bounce house and all kinds of events, so I hope people will like to attend that. It's going to support a fund for our first responders and military families in Falmouth, or actually the whole Cape.
Great. And just for recognition, I was in, I happened to be in Falmouth District Court today, and everyone was talking about the fact that after Road Race Weekend, where we had tens of thousands of people here, running, and then all the people that come with them and our normal summer population, that there were two arrests. That was it, to make it to court. So what that tells me is that the, you know, the event was just incredibly well organized. It's a lot of people, so it's always, you know, an extra challenge for our community, but I think that that, you know, statistic really speaks volume. It's not what in the past has kind of generally been the situation, so it really tells me that Falmouth Police Department, that the staff here in Falmouth, the race organizers, and all, and many, many people who volunteer, really just did a wonderful job. It was a great event. It's certainly a highlight. It highlights our community, and so I just wanted to recognize everyone who was involved in that and having it run so smoothly. There were some, some medical issues, but again, really just, you know, well taken care of, and a lot of services provided to all the folks who come here for a fun weekend and a great event, so.
And help with that Falmouth Walk as well.
Yes.
Also very well-run. They top their numbers every year, and I think they have like 800 people. They ran out of numbers at 700 a few days before the event, so.
Really just a great, great, couple of great events.
Yeah.
Okay, so for public comment, just to remind folks, public comment is an opportunity for folks to speak on any issue that is not on our agenda. So if you're here to speak about something on our agenda, you just have to wait until that, that item comes up. So if you want to speak on something not on our agenda this evening, you have up to two minutes, and you can come up and please introduce yourself, and we ask that you don't make any personal comments about individuals, but come on up. I know Mr. Walker that, I saw you here, if you want to come up and start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here to speak about the stretch code, the Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code, and affordable housing. The goal of the stretch code is superior energy efficiency. The stretch code applies only to new construction. Additions, alterations, and remodeling are exempt from the stretch code. Since 2018, there has been almost no difference between the stretch code and the base code. No difference in how tight a structure must be sealed against air infiltration, no difference in insulation of foundation floor, walls, or ceiling, no difference in requirement for mechanical ventilation, no difference in lighting requirements. The differences between the base code and the stretch code depend on choices the builder makes to achieve energy efficiency. More efficient windows, more efficient domestic hot water production, more efficient heating systems, cooling systems, and prevention of duct leakage. Choices of greater energy efficiency in some parts of the design allow less costly choices in other parts while still attaining the same overall efficiency. Now, given the cost, most of the people affected by the stretch code for construction of new single-family detached houses are people with a good bit of money. The most likely type of individuals to be affected who are in affordable housing are those in multi-family housing, because the stretch code does apply to new construction of multi-family housing that is three stories or less. Energy efficiency can make a big difference for those folks. Many households in the United States cut back on necessities such as food and medicine to pay utility bills. Energy efficiency helps to reduce those bills. Energy efficiency also makes for increased comfort and more healthy living spaces and workspaces thanks to stable inside temperatures.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other individuals here for public comment? Folks, if you're there, there are a lot of seats, so if you want to come in, there's certainly places to sit. Okay? Seeing no one else for public comment, I'm going to move to summary of actions. First, we have approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license WM Cycling Events Incorporated, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, Saturday, November 2nd, 2019, and Sunday, November 3rd, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. I have approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Belong to Each Other Annual Gala at St. Barnabas Church, 91 West Main Street, Thursday, September 12th, 2019.
I move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approved application for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Barnstable County Agricultural Society Comedy Fest, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, 1220 Nathan Ellis Highway, Saturday, September 7th, 2019. Move approval.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved application for special one-day all alcohol liquor license, Falmouth Theater Guild Concerts, Highfield Hall, 7 Highfield Drive, Friday, September 20th, 2019, and Saturday, September 21st, 2019. Move approval.
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And application to approve for special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Sea Around Us, Beth Colt, Quicks Hole LLC, 6 Lascom Avenue, Sunday, September 15th, 2019.
I would move approval for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone here for any of those events that wants to give a quick explanation of those events? Just give you the opportunity. Under administrative orders, approve Eversource Energy petition to install one three-inch conduit on Scranton Avenue, south of Lowry Road.
I have one question regarding the Eversource, not this particular application, but has there been any note or notification from them about that request we made to have them remove their double poles and tighten up their infrastructure?
Mr. Suso, do you know if they've responded back to us?
Well, the most response I've gotten is they have a new service, an individual that their prior community representative retired, and they have a new community representative who I stopped by Town Hall recently, and I had a meeting with that individual, so that I know that she's just coming up to speed on needs and issues in the community, so I will remind her of the importance of that going forward as well.
Because I don't know how long it was, but it must be close to a year when they came and they brought their proposal of, you know, what they would do and how they would do it, and it was like a six or nine-month program, and it sounded good, but I said, when is it going to start?
And unfortunately, their primary advocate retired.
Is gone now, so.
Right.
We'll remind them of what they committed to.
Thank you.
And maybe we can get that on a future agenda to have them come and present that.
Appreciate that.
Do I have a motion on this particular request in front of us? I need a motion to approve. Okay? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved Eversource Energy petition to install one four-inch conduit on Hawthorne Court, north of Grand Avenue. Motion to approve.
Second. Only discussion just on Mr. Brown's point. I guess the next time they have a petition, I would like to have, to ask that someone be here to present the petition, because then we actually will have a reason why they have to be here. So maybe give us a little bit of incentive to.
Actually, if we request that each time, they'll get tired of doing that, and maybe they'll start doing the polls.
Right. But just that, tonight, they weren't given the warning, but the next time they have petition without a representative, I think I'd be inclined to vote no until we have a representative here for that.
Okay.
Mr. Suso, will you remind them?
I will advise them, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I think we voted in favor of that, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Approved Eversource Energy petition to install one four-inch conduit and one handhold, number 214 slash H9, on Allen Avenue, north of Clinton Avenue.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll also note that the recommendation from our engineering department has been to approve all of these.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, good, good reminder. Approved energy, excuse me, approved Eversource Energy petition to install one four-inch conduit and two handholds, number 58 slash, slash H8, and number 58 slash H8A, on Forest Avenue, north of Crown Avenue.
Move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that a second, second?
Okay.
We covered it.
Next, we have the notice of naming request. We have a request for plaque at Taft Playground, Woods Hole. This was something that was before us at our last meeting, and we had been looking for some further information to address this.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm happy to confirm that as the board had thought that this is a longtime, prior-named playground, so this really does not qualify as a, as a naming request under your policy, but would be appropriate for the board if you so choose to concur in the new wording suggested for the plaque and the, that the representatives were going to have that prepared and installed with the concurrence of the board.
Any discussion on this issue?
I move approval of the plaque.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And just to, so just to clarify what Mr. Suso said, as this board had discussed when it was last before us, this really isn't a naming issue. This playground has been named Taft. It has, it's been that for many, many, many years, and it's really about installing a plaque, which really kind of falls outside of that timeline that we generally apply for naming requests. So, thank you for following up on that.
Thank you.
We have number, a letter F, authorized marine and environmental services application to Division of Marine Fisheries for $15,000 grant funding for Waquite Bay Boat Ramp. Did you say so?
Oh, sorry. It's going to.
If, or anyone have any questions? I think it's pretty straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's from the Harbor Masters office and would perform a much-needed improvement, hopefully with state funding success.
There will be some town funding required also for the parking.
Yes. Correct.
So is this one where we should go to the Finance Committee?
Right.
To get their support, because it's going to, is going to require additional funding?
We have transmitted that to the Finance Subcommittee, and the response has been positive from them.
Great. I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, there's some more for the conduits. Vote to approve letter of support for Regional Economic Development Organization grant request by the Cape Cod Economic Development Council Incorporated.
Madam Chair, I think you have a copy of an email that came in fairly late last week from the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce requesting the board's approval for their Blue Initiative, which with the board's concurrence would also involve the town of Falmouth as well, and if it is the board's desire, I'll be happy to transmit a letter of support on your behalf.
Any discussion on this matter? Any questions for Mr. Suso?
Good idea, motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, would it be out of line for me to just back up for a minute and just quickly read the inscription that's on the plaque for that Taft Field?
No, not at all, thank you.
Okay. So just so you know what we voted to, to put down there at Taft Playground. Inscription on the plaque reads, "On May 15th, 1983, a car struck and severely injured Taft Lee Morris, the four-year-old son of Barbara Grouse Morris and Marshall Glenn Morris, and the older brother of Kipling Morris Wiles. Though confined to a wheelchair and unable to speak, this sweet cheerful nature was apparent to all who met him. He died at age 10, February 4th, 1989. In 1991, under the direction of Brian Camener, the community of Woods Hole built this handicap-accessible playground in Taft's memory." So that's what we did. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have vote to approve Conservation Department application to the Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Grant Program in the amount of $43,000 for invasive plant control management at Kunamesset Fields.
Madam Chair, I note that Mark Kasperzick, our representative on this proposal, is with us this evening. Mark, perhaps?
Yes, if you want to come forward, Mark, and just explain a little bit about this.
Yeah, Mark Kasperzick with the Conservation Commission. Yes, we're applying for a mass, mass wildlife habitat grant to control invasive plants over on the Kunamesset Fields. We're talking about close to, you know, 20 acres. A lot of the fields had been established as sand plain grassland about 15, 20 years ago, but over the years, with some of these invasive plants that have really encroached, in particular this black swalloward, it's, you know, some of the native plants and the rare plants that are there now are being overwhelmed, so needs a little help over there, so this is one of the ways. The grant would, we would have to use the money up by June 30th of this coming year, so we'd have to be very proactive.
Any questions?
No, but thank you for taking action on that. We've got a lot of invasives. We need like a, a town-wide effort with that Japanese knotweed and this other stuff. It's just taking over if we don't get a grip on it. So thank you.
And thank you for getting us, this into us, because I know the deadline is really September 2nd, so it's really soon. Any other questions about this?
No.
Do you have a motion? Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mark, very much.
Thank you.
I'm just noticing that Beth Colt is here. Your, your matter, if you're just here for your matter, it was approved, but.
There's a second.
Oh, sorry, there's a second for your.
The liquor license one, but there's also their event.
So you'll get another chance to speak to it.
Tell everybody what it is. Okay, great. Vote to accept donation from Keegan's Jewelers in the amount of $600 to the Recreation Department donation account, and to approve expenditure from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $600 for the 2019 George Keegan Fishing Derby. Anyone here for this event?
Move approval.
Any questions? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Is that what this is? I don't know what this is.
Is it 600?
No, this is a larger amount. Hold on to that.
400.
Here it is right here.
Okay.
This is something different.
Yep.
We have approved Falmouth Youth Baseball application for CPC funding to replace the athletic fencing at the Falmouth Youth Baseball Complex located at 575 Gifford Street.
Hello, welcome.
How are you? I'm Paul Gonzalez. I'm president of the local little league, so we're trying to put new fences up on the fields through a CPC grant. It's the only, we've been working real hard on the fields, fixing them up, new dugouts, new everything, netting. The one thing we can't afford to fix is our fences, so we're hoping to get approval and move on with this. So they've been there Field 1 since 1977 and Field 2 since 1979, when I played there as a kid. And we fixed them to the best of our abilities, but they're at the point where we can't fix them anymore, and they're unsafe to play on.
Okay.
Great. Any questions from the board?
So is this, since this is located on town property, does this actually need to be a town application as opposed to a private organization?
I think it does, because it'll be.
Yes, it'll go through the Recreation Department, and the Recreation Committee has reviewed and recommended favorable action by the board.
Excellent.
So they'll be, they'll be carrying this forward?
Yeah, Joe Alack would be the carrier force.
Okay.
With this, with assistance from DPW.
Right.
In that case, motion to approve.
And does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay.
To a point.
Just because if it's a, if it's town property, then a town department has to be part of that entire process.
Absolutely. We'd like them to be involved.
I think it's the third project, the Recreation Department.
Yes.
Correct.
Great. Any further questions?
Nope, I would move approval.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to back up for a minute. Do you know, Mr. Suso, what, that, it looks like it's connected with the 600, but I'm not sure.
Right. Yeah, th, this is the 600 that's in play.
Okay, so we sign this as well, even though.
So it's correct.
Okay.
You have to approve that portion of it.
Okay.
Income and expense.
Okay. Thank you. Go.
Thank you.
Okay, under special events, reoccurring recommended, Main Street Mile, Falmouth Track Club, Village Green to Surf Drive Beach House, Sunday, 9/8/2019.
Move approval.
Second.
This is not the event that we had parking issues and concerns last year, is it?
That was the marathon.
Okay.
That was Cape Cod Marathon.
That was Cape Cod Marathon. Great. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Falmouth Dream Cruise, Falmouth Classic Car Club, Shore Street Extension, Saturday, 9/21/2019.
Move approval, a familiar event.
Yep. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride, Buzzards Bay Coalition Bike Path from Old Dock Road to Woods Hole and at MBO, Sunday, 10/6/2019.
Move approval.
Second. Only comment I want to make is that we've had other requests for these kinds of events during the season that I'm much more leery about doing, but in October, I think it's a fine time for this kind of event.
Yeah. And I guess a question I had was, is there some kind of traffic management to try to assure the safety of people both participating in this event, but to those that might be just using that bike path for recreational purposes?
It does say that they have to have a detail to arrange for proper safety measures.
Great.
It is one of the conditions, so I think, good point, you raise a good concern. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Main Street Stroll, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce and Falmouth Village Association, Main Street closure from Shore Street Extension to Village Green, and this is Saturday, December 7th, 2019. and this is Saturday, December seventh, two thousand and nineteen.
I would move approval.
Under.
We can move appro- yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, one comment I'll make on that is just to detail that the closure of Main Street will be from three o'clock till nine, which I think is a little bit earlier than it was last year, but I think it's certainly warranted, it's, gets more and more successful every year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And, uh, the police department is fully supportive of the road closure, uh, as the safest way to maintain the event.
And I think it also, um, because it's become more popular and it, it requires a little bit more, you know, there's, there are more logistics in that timeline, I think gives a bit more time for everyone to get ready, so. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, do you have a, did I have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The Jingle Jog and Elf Run, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, Academy Lane to Walker Street, um, to Shore Street and back to Academy Lane, Saturday, December seventh, two thousand and nineteen, so that same day a little bit e- earlier.
Yeah, Madam Chair, in, in the past, just to clarify, historically, or I know it's only the seventh year, but that's been a morning run. It'll now be an afternoon run, uh, coordinated with the closure of Main Street as well. So we're trying to bring those activities together that'll consolidate the season.
To consolidate the, yeah, and to consolidate some of the, those resources.
Need for details, correct.
And the route is much closer to downtown as opposed to just by the.
Thank you, yes.
Any questions?
Who?
Motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you for that, Mr. Suso. And fifty-sixth Annual Christmas Parade, Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, Dillingham Avenue to Davis Straits to Main Street to Village Green, Sunday, twelve eight two thousand and nineteen.
Move approval.
Okay, second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great. Okay, we have new recommended, See Around Us, Woods Hole Business Association, Waterfront Park and Luskum Avenue, Woods Hole, Sunday, nine fifteen two thousand and nineteen. Colt, do you want to tell us just a little bit about this event since it's anyone?
Yes, sure, so, I'm here representing the Woods Hole Business Association, my name is Beth Colt, and, um, this is an event, it was held last year as well. Um, it's also cosponsored by the Woods Hole Scientific Organizations, HUI, MBL and NOAA are very involved in this. Um, we've consolidated this event to one day, September fifteenth, which is a Sunday, and there are really three phases of it. The first is, uh, hangout in Waterfront Park with kids games starting at noon. Uh, then at one o'clock, there will be the Anything But a Boat Race, which, uh, we also ran last year, uh, has been run a number of years in the past as well. Um, and entries are open if you're interested in making an original boat, uh, the entries will be limited, and there was really fun last year, it was a beautiful day and really gorgeous. And then after that, when the race is over, which should be about two o'clock, um, we're asking for a street closure at, at Luskum Avenue. I have a diagram, it's between, uh, Quick's Hole, Taqueria and the Landfall, and we're hoping to have local bands and, uh, serve beer and wine on the outside area, in a secure area, uh, between the two restaurants. And that closure, that street closure is identical to the one we asked for in the spring to celebrate Cinco de Mayo, which was approved. Uh, we did not, in fact, close the street that day, because if anyone remembers, it rained, uh, and blew about fifty miles an hour. So wasn't it a great day for Cinco de Mayo? So we, um, we're respectfully asking for something very similar to that, and we've tied it together with these other fun fall events.
Great.
And one of the, there are, the conditions that were put there is a letter of support from the steamship authorities so that traffic can go through their property to be able to get to the.
Yes, and we received that letter and it was forwarded to Diane Davidson just a couple of days ago, so it should be in your file.
Great.
Great, any questions about this event?
Tell folks at home where Garbage Beach is?
Yeah, Garbage Beach is right next to Waterfront Park, um, it's a very small piece of beach, ill-named, because it has no garbage on it, but I guess it used to.
Okay.
Southwest prevailing wind, it tends to.
Yeah, it can get a little bit of garbage, but it doesn't have any right now.
Great, and I know you, you addressed, um, this, uh, it's one of the things that we talk about all the time, is when you have these type of events to make sure that the area where alcohol is served is really delineated, and I know that you've done that for the other ones.
Yeah. Yeah, and to note, this is a family-friendly event, so there will be people of all ages inside the secure area, but we'll have tips.
People aren't walking freely with their alcohol.
No.
That's the big issue.
Yep.
Great, any questions? Okay?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Approval.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, hope it doesn't rain, have a great day.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. All right, right before our hearing, let's just finish up, um, wedding ceremony, Old Silver Beach, the public side, Lifshin, Saturday, ten five two thousand and nineteen.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you.
We know your money.
I know, right? All right, we have a seven thirty public hearing, I'm going to read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven thirty PM in the selectman's meeting room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on the application of James Curtis of Falmouth Commons LLC for a wastewater flow variance under chapter one eighty, section fifty-six of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw, for the conversion of four thousand two hundred and ten square feet of the existing six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of office space into two residential units at twenty-four Spring Bars Road in said Falmouth parcel thirty-nine fifteen zero four one A zero zero one, per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication date Friday, July twenty-sixth, Falmouth Enterprise. Is someone here for the applicant?
Yes. Aye.
Okay, please come up, introduce yourself. And thank you, I know we were, when I met with Mr. Suso on this, we were looking for some further clarification, and I, I see that you sent that last week,
Sure.
that helps to outline the project a bit more, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Could you just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the project?
Terrific, uh, my name is James Curtis, um, uh, last March, I purchased a property called twenty, named, um, at the location of twenty-four Spring Bars Road, which is improved by three freestanding buildings. Uh, many people are probably familiar with it, it's most familiar because it's on the side of, you, and when you exit the property, you go right into the side of Cappy's Liquors, and that's kind of the most identifying, uh, thing about the property. Uh, each building has two apartments upstairs and two commercial spaces downstairs. The commercial spaces don't have any kitchens in them, uh, two are, two of the spaces are used for fitness studio, which is a terrific business, uh, and the one is, uh, a, um, a, a studio for, uh, named Title FX, and that person, uh, sells, uh, clothing out of there on a wholesale basis. Uh, two others are vacant and one is an appraisal company. I don't have any intention of moving anybody, asking anybody to vacate who's already there, and I actually would seek long-term leases for them, but the property has not had, it, these spaces have been available on the market for a long time, and there just doesn't seem to be a, um, any type of need for office space. I think perhaps they surmise to, we work situations and other situations, the market has shifted, uh, so I'm hoping, uh, to be able to convert these spaces into what will be ground floor apartments. There, and I want to reiterate also that there is a handicapped accessibility, there are, uh, adequate ramps and, and by code, uh, ramps going to the spaces, and there are no steps.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the board on this particular matter, I know we have to, oh, go ahead.
I would comment that, uh, I think it's an appropriate conversion, because the planning board has identified this area for multifamily housing and the, uh, the plaza area for mixed-use development. So in fact, it's sort of in line with what the planning board is already leaning toward, so I would support it.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Oh, no, no, we, we've got a lot more work to do.
More discussion.
Oh, it's a hearing, oh yeah, we have to close the hearing, yeah, sorry.
So, so right now they're not, you're, you're going to have to do some work inside to convert them into apartments, correct?
Yes.
And so, while the ramps are there, the bathroom's going to be also handicap accessible, or?
Uh, I, I, honestly, I don't know what the code is on that, I would have to talk to Andy Hall, the architect, uh, who is making the designs. Uh, if that's something which the board determined was a requirement for some or all of the units, I would make a point of doing that. But I don't know what is required.
If there are ramps there for, they're not, that's not alone to make them handicap accessible.
Oh, certainly not, yes, yeah.
Means they can get in, but it means that it wouldn't necessarily mean that they could actually really visit or ever rent them. The best way of getting these, by law, the request granted, is if there was some affordable housing cond- component of these, this request and the next one.
Mm-hmm.
So if there was some way that, um, you've, in your letters, you state that there, these are going to be long-term tenants, and you're telling us that you, this is what you want, you're going to do, it doesn't actually preclude you from doing it as Airbnb though.
Oh, I, oh.
But we don't have any actual condition or authority, um, we have no, I'm not sure we can put that into a requirement, uh, that it could be done, it could be more cost, uh, the, one of the reasons you're doing this, I think, is more of a moneymaker than a vacant apartment.
Well, I'm, I'm doing it for a couple fold, I, 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 I believe in the importance of a, a high walkability factor, and I think the most successful communities have high walkability factors, where people can go, for obvious reasons, from one place to another. In walking around the neighborhood, this property is kind of an outlier in many ways, and while the developer, Charles Black, intended to have it be a mixed-use development, that I think Jane Jacobs would have been proud of, it instead has turned out to be the balance is off. There is a dearth of, of residential, uh, apartments in the area, and yet there's so much commercial. When you go to the, across the street, there's a gallery and then Walmart, and then Cape Cod Bank and CVS and Di- and, and, and Davis Straits, and then you come to the Christmas tree shops and Cappy's, this is, there, there isn't any residential, uh, we, we need the residential. Now, as far as the Airbnb, um, I have, I don't know how I could assure you of that, but I would write down and make any declaration that you want, because I absolutely no desire or interest to make this Airbnb.
And I understand, and I understand what you're wanting to do, but you may not be the owner forever, and I'm just not sure how we can make sure that these units, once we've granted the variance for the zone, the, uh, Flow Neutral Bylaw, stay as workplace housing or affordable, not necessarily affordable housing, but.
I think the only way that that would happen was if we made some kind of provision for additional density, but I don't think he's asking for that.
No, but the only reason we're grant, can grant this is because it ha- it helps in the affordable housing, so I think we may have a provision we can put in a condition of some aspect of affordable housing.
We could ask town council.
We can ask town coun- ask town council, 'cause he's here. Frank, could we, I know we asked you to come here for something else, but could you just comment, since it's in our, um, authority to grant the waiver, it's actually, you know, our requirement to grant it, can we grant it with a condition that it, um, be, you know, long-term housing or specifically not Airbnb, or, I mean, I don't want to name a, you know, not short-term rental?
Well, you, you, you prefaced the remarks, but I was invited here to come for something else, and I certainly was, but, um, I'm not sure there's any provision like that in the Flow Neutral Bylaw, I don't recall it.
I mean, our.
But I think conceptually, you might be able to put any reasonable condition on your decision, and if you need any help drafting something, I can perhaps help you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just interject, Madam Chair, I know, in the guidelines that the, uh, the board has adopted, it does indicate that affordable housing is a priority area
Right.
for this board to grant such a waiver.
Right.
I think that's where, uh, Selectman Jones is coming from and raising that issue, so, um, perhaps you could grant it, uh, given that that's an identified condition, uh, subject of town council's, um, comfort with how far you can go on that.
And affordable housing, I think, is a general term sometimes and sometimes used as a specific term. I mean, I'm even looking at this, I wouldn't look at having this eighty percent median income, but even if it's in the hundred twenty, hundred forty percent range, so it can be the workforce that we're talking about needing rentals.
It's generally considered workforce housing, so you could make it, I think, it, I think that's a u- a, a term of the art that would specify up to a hundred and ten percent of the average median income of this area.
Uh, may I speak to?
Sure, you can just go right to the.
But then you get all kinds of issues of monitoring and.
I, I, I think.
There's a whole lot of issues involved here, it's not just so simple as a couple of sentences.
Right, I think the bigger concern, if it's that we're trying to avoid, um, it being short-term rentals, that's something that's easier to probably address than to, to speak to the affordability component, and while it's a very nice area, it's, its location and where it is probably will, um, direct the cost that you can get for these units, is my guess, right?
I would think so, the location, and may I speak, uh, to a couple of the points that you were discussing?
Sure.
Uh, so as far as Airbnb, uh, perhaps we could make a stipulation that any lease would be a twelve-month lease or longer, and in that lease, the tenant would not be allowed to have any short-term rental known as Airbnb or any of the like, in order to have some type of terminology in the lease incorporated in the lease. That would give recourse to me to not allow them to, to do it, and it would be able for you to lean on me to lean on them, or you, you know, it would, it would be, to me, the most, uh, logical way in which to address that issue. As far as the issue regarding affordable housing, I, I just want to reiterate that this is, uh, multiple size units. We've got one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom, and so the size of the units really does obviously dictate the price. Not always, location does as well, uh, and these aren't the locations where, to your point, uh, you're going to, one is going to have, you know, luxury waterfront condominiums where people are coming in, taking advantage of all the city, uh, the town has to offer for three months and allowing them vacant. This, this, this area is very robust, people are coming and going all the time, the, the tenant makeup is extremely diverse, from people working in hospitals to an architect to people working in a pizza shop, I mean, it, it, it's all over the place. And I, I, I find that to be wonderful and really very heartening, because that's the way a community grows and stays robust. Um, and, uh, we don't, having vacant space is really anathema to that whole concept, um, so I.
His first answer actually answers all of my concerns, so.
Okay, Doug, did you have any other?
I was just going to say that he's only looking for two units, and to put an affordable restriction is kind of onerous.
There's another, we have another one that's, another request coming, but.
I know, but it's two in each building.
Well, no, no, I think, isn't it four in this building?
Yes, exactly, there, there is a, a bit of a clerical, uh, mistake, uh, because. Could you use the mic so that the audience at home?
Yeah, sorry.
Excuse my belt, sorry, uh, there is a bit of a clerical, uh, error, uh, in speaking with Amy Lowell about this. Uh, the initial plan was to have, uh, two, uh, it, it was more about bedroom count than the, the number of units, and it was, it's still, uh, potentially six bedroom counts, although I wouldn't be turning over six, six units. But the number of units is, is more than two, it's one two-bedroom and potentially a second two-bedroom and the two one-bedrooms.
But the, the number of the bedrooms is the.
The number, it, it, that's what she reiterated to me, uh, is that it's really the number of bedrooms, which is the case of flow.
And so, just to speak to that issue, sorry Doug, but.
No, go ahead.
But before we go forward, just, part of our, um, part of our variance consideration is that we need to have that feedback, um, from Ms. Lowell, and she, um, states that there is capacity, it's not, it doesn't really change the load, I think it's a plus maybe three hundred and fifty-nine or somewhere around there, um, so it's not a significant, um, addition, and she felt, even taking into account all the other development and what we expect to hook up to the, um, sewer, um, that that would be, there is, um, uh, available load, so she didn't have an objection to that.
And the Board of Health also stipulates that there is space on the property for a Title Five.
Right, even though you wouldn't be doing that, that's one of the criteria that they.
Yeah, yes, I, I, yes.
Doug, did you have a comment?
Uh, no, that's just what I said, that the, uh, I felt like the affordable housing thing was a little onerous, even though maybe it's more than two units per building, but.
Great, okay, um, any other discussion from the board before I, uh, take any?
Just one, one quick point, that, um, the first area priority is economic development, and you need folks to be able to have jobs here for the economy to develop, so I think this fits squarely within the top priority we have listed.
Great, good point, okay, um, is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in favor of this project? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Okay, do we have a motion to?
I move or close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board, any further discussion?
Uh, I guess the findings would be that the use of, uh, these vacant businesses would be better served as actually being usable housing.
Year-round housing.
Year-round housing, um, whether we can, and maybe the thing that's still up in the air is to whether we can put a stipulation, but I like the one that's been proposed by the, uh, proponent here, and of the.
Twelve-month lease.
Twelve-month lease without the option of subleasing, I think that's a great idea. Uh, I think this, this certainly does fall into, I'm not sure I agree with, uh, Ms. Moran, the economic development, but it certainly does fall into mixed-use development in the business redevelopment zone, so it does fit within our priorities of when we can grant the waiver.
Finding is, and the finding is that the wastewater superintendent, um, found that there's available load and that the Board of Health has found that a, uh, Title Five could.
Right.
Go on this property. Okay.
Those would be the findings, and I would move approval of the variance.
And maybe just the finding that the applicant has, uh, proposed year-round housing, that's what he proposed, so that would be on the record that that's what we're approving.
Okay, right, okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, stay right there.
Now, the next one will be much tougher.
Yeah, that was the easy one, but.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, second hearing, notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth withhold a public hearing on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, seven thirty PM in the selectman's meeting room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Massachusetts,
on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, seven thirty PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth, Massachusetts, on the application of James Curtis of Falmouth Commons LLC for a wastewater flow variance under Chapter one eighty, Section fifty-six of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called flow-neutral bylaw, for the conversion of two thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet of office space into two residential units at two hundred Worcester Court in said Falmouth parcel thirty-nine fifteen zero three zero C zero 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 C, per order of the Board of Selectmen, publication date Friday, July twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, Falmouth Enterprise.
Welcome again.
Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Just give us a quick...
Okay, so to not sound redundant, but this is a fourth building of the same contiguous property. It's essentially an identical situation to the large, the larger of the two buildings we're talking about is Spring Bar's Road, because one is not intended to be touched at all. And upstairs are two three-bedroom apartments, and I'm proposing downstairs smaller apartments, but one, it would be a three-bedroom, one would be a two-bedroom. This structure is surrounded by significantly more green space. It actually very much looks like a house on the outside, on the Worcester Court side, and the side yards. There's a clamshell path on one side as well, and parking is in the back there. And it's essentially the same with a similar, this one, though, is raised up off the street by about three steps. And there is an AZEC board ramp that is integrated into the access point on the backside of the building. And the building is sprinkled, fully sprinkled. That's the only way in which it's really different in substantive note terms from the other...
The other buildings, okay, great. Any questions from the board on this project?
The Board of Health has the same statement about Title V, and I guess this has one more gallon per day flow. And the wastewater superintendent says we have capacity for this also.
Okay, great. Anything else from the board before I hear from the public? Okay?
One more gallon, huh?
Anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this project or this variance? Anyone here who wants to speak against this waiver? No? Okay.
I would like to ditto the findings.
Yep, I agree.
Do we close a hearing first?
Oh, sorry, move to close the hearing?
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, same findings?
Same findings, and I'd love to put the same stipulation, I guess I'd check with the...
For year-round.
For year-round.
Perfect, yeah.
Great. Okay.
So I'd move approval with that stipulation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thanks for providing all the information. It makes it much smoother.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, we have liquor license hearing. Notice is hereby given, oops. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws as amended that the Tea Room, LLC DBA The Tea Room, has applied for a new seasonal all-alcohol common victualler license to be exercised at one ninety-six Crystal Springs Avenue, North Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty PM on the application. Licensing Board, Megan English-Praga, Doug Brown, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Samuel H. Patterson. Publication date, Friday, August ninth, two thousand nineteen, Falmouth Enterprise. He was there. There you are. Welcome. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Matt Terry from the firm of Amen Clower here in Falmouth, representing the applicant here tonight. Before we begin, I don't know if, I did have some visuals.
Okay, maybe Peter could help you.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks so much. Thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the board. I'm here tonight representing Tea Room LLC. They are the operator of The Tea Room in the New Silver Beach neighborhood. They are applying this year for a seasonal license to begin service next season under a renewal with the town and the ABCC. That's all right. The Tea Room, in its current incarnation, has been owned and operated by this same family, the applicant, for thirty-two years. Clive Gomo began operating it in nineteen eighty-seven, and his daughter Holly and her husband Mike took over operations four years ago. And they've since added a third generation with their daughter helping them out at the operation. They have a thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot premises on the first floor of the building, nine rooms, four of which are open to the public. And they have inside seating for twenty-four people and a game area. Their existing food menu and the number of seats will be unchanged. They serve coffee, sandwiches, finger foods, and fish platters. They're looking to expand their service to their existing customer base, which is heavily drawn from the neighborhood. The business operates seasonally seven days a week. Most evenings, they close at eight or nine with the sun set, but would like to be permitted to serve, thank you Peter, from eleven to eleven, because they occasionally host events for the Neighborhood Association. Put up the, just so you can get a sense, this is the Tea Room. It has been operating as a food and entertainment establishment since as early as nineteen twenty-one. And there's also some pictures in some Falmouth historical books of alcohol being served on premises. The manager of the LLC is Holly Pacella, who's Clive Gomo's daughter. And she has been in the food service industry since nineteen ninety-six, including taking over operation of The Tea Room from Clive. And she and her husband Mike, who are both here this evening, are both tip-certified to be able to start serving. To get a sense for the layout, I'll just show the floor plan. So this is, again, the first floor. There are five entrances and exits. And the marked area is the area where they would propose to allow alcohol, the inside seating and outside seating area here, and then the seating area here with the game area to the side and a separate entrance. So the folks who are manning the counter have line of sight to all of the area where alcohol is going to be allowed. Alcohol will not be allowed under any circumstances in the game area. This outside seating area will be fenced off and will not have an external exit, meaning that anyone who brings a drink outside has to bring it back inside before exiting the premises, so that as the town would require and the ABCC would require, the premises where service is occurring is both supervised and tightly delineated. The applicant and her husband are in attendance tonight, as well as a number of supportive neighbors and community members. At this point, I'll welcome any questions from the board. And we have a number of folks here in the hallway who may choose to speak in support.
Great, thank you. Doug?
In your plan, where it says seating area, there's a solid line above it. Is that designated a wall?
No.
So what delineates between the seating area and the game area?
You need to identify yourself.
Just introduce yourself a few more.
Hi, I'm Mike Pacella. Excuse me. In between the inside seating and what's marked the other seating area, we were going to create a buffer zone. There's four entryways into this building in the main big room. So we found a way to designate where the kids would have a seating area, game area, the candy and the ice cream would be cordoned off. And if you came in a different entrance, you could still come with your parent, I suppose, as long as you had an adult with you, order the food, drinks. But if you're just a little kid coming in, you could come in the other way. So it's not like we're trying to get rid of the kids, we're just trying to bring the families together.
Okay, you've lost, I guess, that wasn't the question I was asking, but now you've lost me as to what you're saying, so...
So actually, the door, the, can I point?
Yeah, please do.
We have an entryway here and here, one here and one there. This actually would be, like, it's not going to be a half-wall. We have these things, we can move around to create a buffer almost like your desk, and it would go here. So the kids could enter here, do their thing, the slush and ice cream candy is all going to be on this side.
And that's where your lawyer just said the drinking was going to be occurring.
No, if I did, I misspoke. It is everywhere from this side out to the outdoor seating area.
So there's no delineation in this plan you've given us that shows where it is and where it isn't?
It runs along this axis.
The plan doesn't show us that.
Well, this solid line is supposed to show it, that's the wall.
The slightly darker line.
See how these are all walls, I'm sorry, I didn't mark it better, but that is the wall.
Okay. And that basis, it's not a permanent wall, it's a temporary thing you can put up.
Right. It's not up presently, because things have to move around, that's why we're making the changes for next year.
And so a kid could come in the left-hand side of that door or the far-left door and be on that left-hand side of the area.
And have no access through. But a parent could still see over that. And, you know, I don't know the rules, but they could go, you know, anyone else could come in this way, and that would be where you'd have to be of age. Hard to imagine with your parents.
I have a question. So if...
Go ahead and then I'll come back to you.
Are you finished?
I've got a few others, we can go back and forth.
All right, okay, so just curious then, if that is delineated as the drinking area, and kids want to order a slushy or some candy, they have to go to that same counter, right?
No, the ice cream, the slush and candy is all on this side, or will be.
How do they get to the counter?
So you walk in the door here, and the counter's going to be all here. The game area's here, the kids, and there's a seating area for the kids. And then here, the seating area, counter, to order food.
Well, if there's going to be a barrier all the way, that wall that goes from the door to the counter edge?
Yes.
How do the kids...
Yeah, all this is, this is a solid wall already, that from the kitchen.
Yeah.
And this right here would be the half-wall.
Yeah. So how do the kids get from the game area and their seating area up to the counter?
I think there's going to be a different counter. Are you saying there's going to be a different counter for slush, and it's not noted on that?
And you can't, you know...
No, it's not.
And no access to the kitchen, because you said there's a solid wall.
Right, no access to the kitchen.
For the slushies.
No, the slush, everything's going to be on that side for them. They can order anything they want from there, they're not going to have access to the other side.
How do they order? Where do they stand when they're ordering?
This is a big room, so what's going to be is much like this, would be counter here all the way down. And then stand here, order, then they could go into the game room or sit and...
Oh, so there's going to be another whole thing built that's not yet shown? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, no, well, the counter, the candy counter is a big giant unit, it's almost like a bureau. It would just get slid into place differently where it is now.
Okay.
Is there any eating right now? I mean, actually, I know there is, I was there yesterday. It says outside seating. Outside that fence, there are lots of seats and picnic tables that people were eating at, which I don't think is part of your license. At least when I'm looking at your common victualler license, that's not where eating is supposed to be occurring.
I'm not sure, I mean, we have seats up there, yes.
Could you swing the mic around so it's pointed more to him, picks up for the audience at home?
And will people still be expecting that they can order at the counter, go out to that area that they've been sitting at? And it's a wonderful place to sit, because it's a raised little bar area, or not a bar, but a raised area with high tops.
That's what we were hoping for, yes.
And but they won't be able to bring those, they won't be able to go out there with the alcohol.
Well, that's part of the seating area that we're asking about.
Yeah, just to clarify, so per both local and state regulations, folks wouldn't be able to exit this internal area or this, or this internal or this external area with an alcoholic beverage. So to the extent that there are seats set up outside of this fencing, alcohol will not be permitted.
Okay, that's a little different what the owner was just suggesting, is he was hoping they could go out there.
Oh, no, I misspoke. I wasn't talking, I was talking about inside that seating area only.
The part that's called outside seating, that part is what you're talking about?
Certainly, when I've seen other applications, we've also seen where the storage of alcohol is going to be. Do you have any plans to where that is going to be stored?
Well, it would be back behind the file-back kitchen, at the very top.
You can use the cursor. You can use the cursor if you want to point. And who are you intending to have be serving?
Um, well, probably myself, we don't, we didn't hire anyone at this point, we're in the formative stages.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I honestly feel like we really should have a plan that shows where the kids get served and where the adults get served, if it's going to be two different things. I just don't feel like I really completely understand what it is you're going to do there. If you have that kitchen area, seems like that's where the serving is going to happen. Are the liquor drinks going to be served at that counter as well, that same food counter? Is there a separate bar? I know you just told me the candy thing gets pushed around.
That kitchen is separated.
Is that counter, the candy counter that you were just talking about that gets moved?
Presently, it is, yes.
Okay.
So with that, we'd have to get moved out and there would be a new counter to come over and order dinner or whatever you order.
Just for the existing conditions, that counter is where you order everything.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And so what they're proposing is to bifurcate that so that the stuff that the kids are interested in will be over here and essentially have the counter be an L and to be accessible from the kitchen backspace. And then this area will be for ordering food off the menu and for ordering alcoholic beverages.
So you're saying it's the same counter?
Well, they're going to extend it out.
It's an L counter that's connected.
Right, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi. Any other questions from the board at this point in time?
I still don't see really how that plan works, because you're still, you're going to have to get through that petition to come from the kitchen to that second seating area. If it's petitioned off, I don't really understand the plan. I think you need to really maybe give us a little more complete plan of what you have in mind. That's my feeling.
Okay, right. So I just, before we take comments from everybody here in the audience, let me just say this. We received so many emails, so thank you to everyone who sent emails. We've looked at them all, we received lots in opposition, and we received a lot of emails in support. So generally, what we're going to do is we're going to open it up, and I'll take comments from folks. Our hope is that, you know, I know folks want to voice their opinion, but not to hear fifty-five of the same thing, because we're, we'll be here for the entire night. So the goal is for the board to really hear from folks. In addition, you know, again, we have viewed all of the emails that everyone sent. We also received an email from, just to go over the thing, from the Falmouth Police Department. Captain Reed, in particular, went to the site, took a look at it, sort of was in the area for a little while, and did write that they had real concerns about this area and that they were not in support of, from a public safety standpoint, of the serving of alcohol at this location. We also received input from the town planner, who noted that there wouldn't be any additional parking required at this site if this license was granted. Who else did we hear from?
I did want to comment, that the attorney for the applicant did answer some questions, saying there was ample parking. And I went out there, and I think the town planner and the police department disagree with the statement that there's ample parking there. And I would, I do take exception to the idea to say there's ample parking. It was very hard for me to find a spot at five-thirty.
I don't know if I misread it, but I didn't think he said it was ample parking, but he said that just that technically there would be no additional parking required because of the nature of the application.
Mr. Bott.
That's Mr. Bott said that.
Yes, right.
But the applicant's attorney said there was ample parking.
Oh, I see.
I think you're referring to an email from Attorney Clower, where he said that there was ample on-street parking.
Yes. I would disagree with that statement.
And it's worth noting that the line share of the clientele are walk-up customers. This isn't a driving destination, and if folks have been up there...
I don't disagree with that, I just disagree with the statement by the other attorney that there's ample on-street parking. And that, it just cannot be put forward as a statement of fact that there's ample on-street parking.
So just, I just want everyone, before we start, that we, you know, just to note, we've read all of the emails, we have that input. And then the other piece is that this is a community, this is a wonderful particular, you know, in particular, this neighborhood is wonderful. So please just direct your comments to the board, and we'll answer any questions that we have. so please just direct your comments to the, to the board, um, and we'll answer any questions that we have, uh, we don't want to get into any back and forth. Everyone here cares about this neighborhood and this community, and, and everybody, I can say, who was in opposition, spoke very highly of their, their appreciation for the T-room, so, um, just with all of that, if you want to make a comment, um, please raise your hand, and we'll, I'll just start in the closest to the microphone, so if you want to come up, ma'am, introduce yourself. Either one of you, introduce yourself, and, and we'll try to keep it to about a two-minute, um, comment.
Hello, my name is Anne Marie Moore.
Welcome.
And I want to speak on the issue of the liquor license at the T-room. I strongly oppose the granting of a liquor license to the T-room at Silver Beach. I'm a third-generation, summer resident in this beautiful, peaceful family community. I live at fifteen ninety-nine Silver Beach Avenue at the entrance to the beach, one of the entrances to the beach. We came here in the fifties and have enjoyed the close-knit atmosphere. There are already eight restaurants serving liquor within a three-mile radius of the beach. Another drinking, eating establishment is not needed. The very asking of the license has created a split in the community. The T-room's argument they will close without the license should not prevail over the granting of the license, which would threaten the safety of all the residents. There is no, and I want to say it's, again, no on-street parking, and limited narrow sidewalks. The beachgoers and bike riders use the street to get from place to place. The added congestion and the likelihood of DUI from the local establishment is another safety issue. There have been multiple occasions when the fire engine, and they came to our house last year, and ambulants had difficulties getting to our home to help us with medical emergencies. We have had to ask police, for police assistance with drunk or drinking people who go to the beach at sunset and after the restaurants and the bars close. Help us prevent potential accidents, do not grant this request, thank you.
Thank you, madam, if you want to come up?
Hi, Barbara Cutino, it's my sister, I had a question, um, I, I oppose this too, I don't feel they can add anything to our community, um, and yes, there are a lot of walkers, but the people have come from someplace in a car, and then, then walk around. I, I was confused about the, the drawing, one was ins, we were talking inside, outside, so, I, 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 I'll direct it to you. Uh, uh, is the license asking for, um, beer and alcohol to be served in the inside, in the outside area, but not below, beyond the fence?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the people will be drinking outside, but have a fence around them?
The, that, yes, that outside area, that's sort of raised up, would be the extension of the alcohol.
E- eating and drinking there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I, I oppose it for the same reasons as my sister, parking has been a nightmare. Um, and we received something from the police, um, from the association, and the police had said, because none of the streets are twenty feet wi- wide, that there is no parking on the streets at all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks just want to put their hand up, okay, you want to come on over?
Hey, good evening, Dennis Murphy, Precinct Five, uh, former town meeting member and former zoning board member here in, uh, in Falmouth. I'm in speaking in favor of the, uh, of the proposal here, uh, first, about the parking, everybody knows New Silver parking is difficult. That's actually, to me, a sign that there's not going to be additional people coming into New Silver, to this establishment. So, uh, just a couple of quick points, is, um, I'm third-generation New Silver Beach, I live in North Falmouth year-round. I, um, I'm three doors down from the T-room, I can see it, uh, from my porch. So, the T-room has been the heart and soul of New Silver for, since my grandfather was the head lifeguard in New Silver, uh, back in the fifties. I just hate to see it go away, they have such a limited option to make money, it's only a two-month community. That's when they're looking to add a menu item, basically, which is beer and wine, so that they can take the people that are already coming in there to eat, and be able to-
Whoops, please, folks, just, if you want to speak, you can wait, but, but, uh, we are gonna respect folks' time at the microphone, thank you.
Thank you. So just a couple of quick points, um, one of the, uh, let's see, one of the issues is future owners, because we know that Mike and Holly are great stewards, if they sell, that's an unfair burden on these guys. They're the ones applying for the application, not a future applicant, that applicant would have to come before you guys for the same process. It's my understanding that, um, that this is a seasonal license request, and it's not rubber stamped for next year, so they would have to come back. So, I'm in support of this, um, because I think we can give them a chance to make some money and keep the T-room open. I'd hate to see that building go away, which is the heart and soul of New Silver. Right across the street is the Association Tennis Courts, where there are events that are held there, up to eleven o'clock sometimes. I think that's the reason why he's applying for that, he doesn't want to have to come back every time they have a special event there, and look for, uh, extended hours, he made it clear at a community meeting that he's looking to stay open to nine, maybe ten some nights. Anyone who's in that village knows that the village quiets down about that time. So I think he's a great steward of the area, and I fully support his application, I hope you guys do too.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question of the lawyer, since, uh, Mr. Murphy brought this up?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Murphy suggested that he's talking about it for this season, you had said in your presentation, we're talking about for next season. It's a little bit early, actually, for us to be considering seasonal licenses for two thousand twenty, so I just want to be very clear, what season, whether they're talking two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty?
So we're applying for it to be granted this year, but it's not gonna be utilized. And the reason for that is so that we can, uh, get a head start on two thousand twenty, and, uh, apply both to the town and the ABCC, uh, for renewal, which, uh, to Mr. Murphy's point, is not a rubber stamp, but, um, contains a lot, uh, fewer requirements than the initial application does. So we thought we'd get that out of the way in two thousand nineteen.
But you're not asking to use the license this year?
That's correct.
So, we wouldn't be, I mean, so we could even grant it with the condition it not be used this year?
Perfectly fine.
Because the thing is, the ABC will not see it as a renewal if it's not used, so I'm not sure it actually serves any purpose. If it hasn't been used, it doesn't really count as a renewal, because we don't, at least I would not consider it a renewal, because I'd have no evidence as to what had happened in the past, to be able to say, oh, I know that this organization can do this well, I can now grant a renewal, a renewal for me is very different than giving a fir- first-time person trying a chance to do it. And if you've never used a liquor license, that is not a renewal in my book, and I don't think the ABC would consider it either. So I guess I'd really be stuck in a position as to how to deal with that issue of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one.
My guess is, part of it is, if they, if they have it, then some of the, I mean, they're going to need to make some, um, modifications to this facility in order to accommodate this, if it's, um, if it's granted, so while-
But every other organization's come to us with those accommodations done before they've applied for it. And certainly the, the Boathouse, they did all their changes first, before we were able to grant them some things.
I think, if I might, to add to Megan's statement, it's really a unique situation, where, for example, the Boathouse has a longer time that it's opened, much, much bigger establishment, where you basically have a, a family, small neighborhood, it, it does present time challenges, so I, I think, see that a little differently in that respect.
And maybe money, money challenges.
Yeah, there is, I was gonna say also capital as well, that they don't want to make renovations for something that ultimately isn't gonna be utilized.
Right, even though there's a risk it isn't ultimately renewed, okay, great. Um, anyone else who wants to speak, sir, come on up?
Hi, my name is Dave Sarafinus, I'm at fifteen Ravenwood, at the corner of V-Stav, and, uh, I see the T-room, and I've seen it for twenty years, since I've been here for twenty years, I know Mike and Holly very well. Uh, one of the things I want to point out is that the character of these people is such that they're very altruistic, and they're ve- very much watching over the children that come into the T-room. With respect to people's concern about what kind of people are gonna come in, are they gonna get drunk, are they gonna get DUIs and everything? If I had one vote for one person to watch over that, it would be Mike, in fact, Mike would be the babysitter for my children. He's not one to put up with any nonsense, I can tell you that, so he's gonna be able to monitor it, uh, uh, understand when people have had a little too much to drink, uh, it's a short period of time. It's necessary to, to make it financially viable for, for the neighborhood. And I think it's, it's the one thing that sets, uh, New Silver Beach apart from other communities down the Cape. Without that, uh, if, if people here remember the couple of years where the T-room wasn't open, it was a completely different atmosphere. And I think it brings a lot of joy to the children, it brings a lot of joy to the parents. And I see nothing wrong with having a couple of beers after a day, um, socializing with your neighbors, and, you know, so I'm, I'm obviously in favor of, uh, of going ahead with the, uh, with Mike's proposal and Holly's proposal.
Great, thank you. Okay, yeah. Hi, Mr. Dine.
Good evening, Bill Dine, and, uh, town meeting member, Precinct Five, New Silver Beach. Some people ask where's New Silver Beach, and I answered at town meeting. Couple of points, uh, first of all, I support Mike, Holly, for what they've done down there, and what they're doing, trying to do with the T-room. The T-room is not a destination restaurant, it's a local gem. With six hundred homes in the area and four hundred and forty paid New Silver Beach members, most are walking customers. And whether they get the license or don't, you're still gonna have the six hundred homes, you're gonna have three cars in each household, you've got the same driving issues, you've got the same parking issues, but it works, because he has a customer base now on a regular basis. The T-room has been open since, uh, nineteen nineteen, a hundred years, closed a couple of times during some, uh, problems it had. It had a liquor license for fifteen years, nineteen twenty-three to nineteen thirty-eight. And it had, it was called the Beer Gardens. The hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight ended the Beer Garden, it was gone, and they say you can still find cans out there somewhere buried. Mike and Holly are concerned about safety, and will monitor all patrons as, as the New Silver Beach Association does, with permanent liquor licenses the Association has for functions under tennis courts, serving alcohol, right across the street, so we do that now. Mike and Holly have done a great job supporting New Silver Beach, I just want to give you a few of the character references, what they've done. They're very quiet about it, some people don't know if they've done this. They allow the New Silver Beach store, right across the street from their establishment, to use their Wi-Fi, so we can sell goods and save hundreds of dollars in charges, and we surpassed our sales Sunday night of all last year, based on his help with the Wi-Fi for credit cards and debit cards, we didn't have that before. So he's, he paid for that for us, that helped. T-room helps with the Fourth of July Har- uh, Harbors Parade, which we have down there, it's been on for years. He stores all, all the free ice cream in his freezer for the kids, for the parade afterwards, no charge, he's glad he does that for us. During Irish night, he supplies all the water, not the alcohol, all the water needed to hold the water containers, to hold the tents. So he willingly runs the hose over, fills the things, the tanks for us, and holds it. And based on talking with the treasurer of the association, he says, he saved us twenty thousand dollars, up to twenty thousand dollars recently. We spent a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for tennis court, did it all over, and he had some of his men out there working above and beyond, and saved us probably twenty grand on that alone.
Thank you, Bill, that's your two minutes, sorry.
Okay, he just wants, real quick, he just wants to change the menu, to enhance the, like, Italianite, or the wine, and he only has fourteen weeks to make money, so he needs to do that, to survive, and we want to be here another hundred years, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this matter, yes, come on up? Welcome.
Hi, Lloyd Beckett, Wicker Tree Road. Uh, three, I'm speaking in favor, and I agree Mike is a, a good part of our community. The three concerns, parking's a problem, DUI risk, and, uh, changes the nature of the neighborhood to have alcohol there. I agree parking's a problem, shouldn't drive to the beach unless you're mobility impaired, you should walk, like when we were kids, and you were kids, and your kids were kids, right, everybody driving to the beach is a loser, so there's no parking there, so don't drive there. People say, uh, it could impact DUI, uh, I agree with the first speaker, there's, uh, seven or eight places within three miles that serve alcohol, Courtyard, Silver Lounge, all those places, they're not walkable, so people drive there, have drinks, and then must drive home. If you can go down to Mike's and get a beer, you don't drive home, you walk down and walk back, so the possibility DUI risk could be reduced. Uh, the other thing about nature of the community, uh, Silver Beach Hotel on Arlington Street, which closed in the sixties, way before my time of legal drinking age, uh, people tell me it had a very vibrant bar, and was a big part of the community. And all you old folks who remember that in the thirties, forties, and fifties should nod, at least if the stories are right. So having a place to drink in the community wasn't a bad thing in the forties, fifties, and sixties, so I'd ask you why it is now.
Thank you very much. Yes, come on up, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, my name is Dennis O'Connell, I live at thirty Silver Beach Avenue in North Falmouth. And, uh, I want to speak about the, the meetings that we had over the weekend, for starters, uh, of which we got very little information. Uh, obviously, I'm, I'm opposed to this, um, and it started out by the owner saying, if I don't get this, I'll probably have to close the T-room. Well, the T-room is not the T-room that everybody is, remembers, people that have been here for years, remember the T-room where there'd be thirty, forty bikes out front, there'd be kids on the machines, there'd be kids buying slushies, having a good time, just hanging out, while those days are gone, it's been changed. I don't know if anybody, we purchase a man to change the business, he's trying to make money, that part I understand. When you bring alcohol into a neighborhood, that for all these years, since nineteen thirty-eight, since the hurricane, there has been no alcohol there, when you bring alcohol into an area where these bikes are, where these kids are riding up and down the streets, there's two streets that come into, to North Falmouth, Silver Beach Avenue and Ocean View Avenue, and those two streets are all the, where the kids go. They ride their bikes, they have a rite of passage, when they finally are five or six years old, they can ride their bikes down to the, to the tennis courts, to the harbor, to the beach. The concern is, when alcohol is being served from eleven o'clock to eleven o'clock, which we just found out, it was not mentioned at the meetings, these children are in jeopardy, so from my standpoint, it's a public safety issue, I think of many, many people that are in the same situation, this is a public safety issue, where people will be on the roads at eleven o'clock in the morning to eleven o'clock at night, with kids riding up and down the street. The T-room is across the street from the tennis court. This gentleman said that I only want to open up a couple of nights during the course of the whole summer, this is what he said the other day, because I want to be there when they have, the Association has their events, we have two events with alcohol that are there till eleven o'clock. So I said, if that's the case, there may be five nights during the course of the summer, you'll be open till eleven. Now the application is eleven to eleven, I think seven days a week is what, what, what it's granted. So, I think we're looking at an area that has totally changed already, this gentleman has made changes to the building, he's already built his ship, as I call it, where people will be out there watching the sunset with the handcrafted cocktails, this is already in place. With my understanding that if you make a change to the footprint of the building, which has been done, and you add things on, you should have some type of community input, the same thing that he is asking right now, on last, uh, Saturday and last Friday, community input. I don't remember it, our association probably would have sent out a notice, it, changes have been made, I understand that has some ramifications.
Thank you, sir.
So, just quickly, if you might, why am I here?
Yep, yep.
I'm here for the little kids that drive their bikes at ten o'clock when the movie is over, across the street from this establishment, when people will be there, having their cocktails, watching the, uh, the sunset, I'm here for those people that go up the street, and God forbid that there's somebody else driving that can't even see these kids. Lastly, here's a petition, over a hundred names, he did say if I have, uh, the word was a lot, if I have a lot of people that are in opposition, I probably won't do this, here's petitions with over a hundred names, and I'd like to have you take this into consideration.
We, you can submit that, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, I, 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 you know, like I said, we have all the emails that folks have sent, so I'll take a few more comments, I don't want to shut anyone off, but I also, you know, want to be able to move along, so, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I've been going to New Silver Beach for over fifty years, my name is Paul Hunt.
You just introduce yourself? Great, thank you.
And I'm on Ravenwood Road. Mike and Holly have dedicated their lives over the summertime in July and August to the children of this community. The community is probably the safest place in America. The little kids play, and if, if anybody goes down to Mike's place and has a, a beer or a glass of wine at sunset, the movie doesn't start until sunset, so I don't think anybody's gonna interfere with the children. As far as some of the people in opposition to the T-room, having Mike and Holly make some money in the two-month period that it's open, I've never seen them in the T-room, it would be a good, uh, question to ask them, have they ever gone down there and had dinner? Or have they ever gone down there and supported them and had lunch? Because the gentleman the other day mentioned he heard he had good food. Well, Mike and Harley are behind the kitchen counter all day long and sometimes into the evening, serving dinner and lunch, and these people didn't even know they had food. So most of the people that are in opposition to the Tea Room don't support it anyway. So why would they care? These guys have dedicated their lives to the community. And I think they should be applauded for what they do, not condemned. At least give them a shot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else who would like to make any comments? Yep, Mr. Murphy, come on up.
Good evening, my name's Kevin Murphy. Um, I'm a precinct five meeting member. I was a former selectman that worked diligently to get town storage in New Silver Beach, to be able to help to get the harbor, uh, funded and repaired. Because my roots came from New Silver Beach. I was born in New Silver Beach. My folks owned a market over in, um, Gansett while my dad was a school teacher, who happened to also be a lifeguard on that beach. I was lucky enough to then be a lifeguard myself years later. I will say that, uh, um, what they're trying to do is control the crowd. If you don't have a liquor license, folks, anyone can walk in and have a drink. You can BYOB into his establishment. The owners then have no control. They can't tell you, they can't say how old you are because they don't know. They don't check your ID. If they have a license, they have that control. They can also make sure that you are not served if you've had too much to drink. I lived my entire adult life in the restaurant business that always was complemented by liquor. I will say that it's a hard business, but it's the responsibility of the owners to make sure that those that are there actually consume alcohol in a responsible way. Quite candidly, don't we want parents to be with their kids at, at a place like this? We would encourage the parents to be there instead of just shooing them down the street to go get an ice cream and play a game all by themselves, while we sit on the porch and have a cocktail. This way you can actually do the same with your children. I will say also that the eleven o'clock license, it would be great. Mike would say, yeah, I'd like only an eleven o'clock license on Saturdays. Unfortunately, folks, there's no way you can issue a license based on just one night a week. You change the hours to a Saturday night. The hours are the hours set by whatever the board of selectmen does. And Mr. Jones, you had a good point about the plan, as well as you dug. But what came first, the chicken or the egg? So many establishments don't do their improvements because the improvements would not in fact be viable, or, or, in other words, until they actually get the license. What came first, the chicken or the egg? What he's trying to do is try to see whether you're gonna give him a license, which I think you should do, and give him that opportunity and give the community that opportunity. I know you have some naysayers and you're gonna have naysayers in every particular license and every particular thing in this community. However, times change and things change. When this gentleman was talking about the, uh, New Silver Beach Hotel, I happened to be a little kid then and I lived across the street and on Crystal Spring Avenue, and I'd peek in those windows and I wished when I was older, I'd have as much fun as those people in that bar having a couple of drinks. So I gotta tell you, that was a community. That was the adults getting together. Right now, the adults in the entire, uh, New Silver Beach area only get together on special events. Unless they're also invited over someone's house or go to someone's house. This can now be an area where you can meet actually as adults and find each other and have a, a, a common conversation over an adult beverage. He's not looking to put a full bar in there with, you have liquor bottles and things like that. He's talking about be, being able to serve someone a cold beer with their kids, with them going to the game room when they get off the beach. So I, I just say to you folks, you've gotta look at the forest between the trees. And, um, he would have control with the liquor license and I full-heartedly support it. And I think that they, uh, work very hard. These folks are the only employees, so they work very hard to maintain their business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Penny Fleming and I live at sixty-nine Silver Beach Avenue. And I also think highly of Mike and, and the family for what they've done with the Tea Room. But I am opposed. And I'm opposed because the first time that, that the neighborhood heard about this Tea Room li- the, uh, license or the application for the license was through the paper. So nobody knew that he was actually, had applied for the license. We were offered to come down to listen to Mike, explain everything, his vision for what he was going to do with his establishment. But there was no concrete business plan. There was no, um, questions were asked, but they weren't answered. And so for me, until there's a, a, a business plan, and, and I hear people saying, um, well, you know, somebody just, he just wants to have a beer, people just wanna have a beer, but that's not what this application says. And it doesn't say that it's gonna be beer or wine or any of that. And so until there's a good business plan and, and that the community could understand what that business plan is, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. I'm gonna take about two more comments, if anybody. Yes, ma'am, in the corner, if you wanna make your way out. Is there anyone else, um, who's closer, just while she's making her way? Ma'am, if you wanna come up.
Hi, my name is Joyce Martin Jones. I've been at New Silver Beach since nineteen fifty. And I am for this. This family is wonderful. There is not just Mike Harley and their daughter Anna, but their parents are there. There's three generations of this family that worked there and put their heart and soul in it to make this for us. We went for a period of time when we didn't have a Tea Room. That beach was not the same. They've brought back life to our beach and to our community. We do have some events across the street and liquor licenses are given for those nights. They have nothing to do with Mike and Harley or the Tea Room. There's drinking over there. There's never been an incident. All of us walk to the Tea Room. Very few drive to the Tea Room. It's that type of place. There's going to be very limited seating inside there, so it's not as if they could draw hundreds of people. It's not going to be a big drinking establishment. People are not going to drive from other neighborhoods to get to the Tea Room for a night out. So it's just not going to happen. It's not that kind of a place. And really, if you ever go there, you'll see it's a small area with very few tables and seats. So we watch the sunset. Right now they're offering, and, and it's a small area, so it can't hold a lot of people. Right now they've been offering dinners at night, it's so much fun. But a lot of us just bring our own wine or beer or whatever we want to it. And let me tell you, there are a lot of kids down there that, at night, as there are at a lot of beaches, that are out there drinking. So maybe if the parents came down, they could see what was going on. They might find out that their kids are down there doing this and it might actually curb the drinking. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Pam Kirk. I live at nineteen Moses Road and I own another piece of property across the street, which abuts the Tea Room just corner to corner. I have great respect for Harley and, and Cubby and Mike. They're, they're wonderful people, but I do object to a liquor license in this neighborhood. This is a residential, um, neighborhood. It has, it's, there is the Tea Room which operates on a daily basis. Now we have an open-air restaurant, barroom. There's no, um, that sound voices carry at night. The neighbors are going to hear people talking, they're gonna be laughing, they're gonna be having a good time, and it's gonna be interrupting the people that live there beside this, beside or near the Tea Room. And I'm, I'm really upset that I'm having to say this. Mike doesn't want it to happen, I know that. I have great respect for him. But I don't, I do not have respect for, or shouldn't say respect, but I do not wish to have a alcohol, all alcohol license approved for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I again clarify with the attorney? I believe the application is for all alcohol. Mr. Murphy had suggested it was gonna be, that he was not looking to have bottles of liquor, but just really just beer and wine. But I believe the application is for all alcohol.
It's an all alcohol license and I can let Mike speak further to it, um, as to what they intend to offer with the all alcohol license.
Doesn't affect us because we are, what we're granting allows, if it's all alcohol, it allows all alcohol. And no matter what intention has, it's what we're granting that is, governs our decision. One thing, I just would love to say something about New Silver Beach. I was so impressed driving through the community yesterday and really jealous of what you guys have. It's sad that this is becoming a divisive issue between the, the groups because what you have is so rare and so special in this world where you actually have a place where the kids can ride their bikes down to the beach, down to a place to get something to eat. The parents don't have to helicopter them and make sure that they're with them all the time because you trust your community, you, you trust your neighbors to look after the kid who's riding down the bike. And it is, I was just so amazed and so impressed and really, really, you're doing a fantastic job. And what I've heard people say is how great Mike and Harley are, and I think everybody here feels that way. And I hope that they don't see whatever decision's made is not a reflection on them. It's a reflection on some other issues and I hope your community can still be a community no matter which way the decision goes.
Oh, go ahead, Mark, and then ma'am, you can come on up.
I just got a couple of questions on Mark Fineran. These guys have a common victual license. Does anyone with a common victual license, um, have the right and the ability to ask for a liquor license to complement it?
I believe so.
Can any of you ever think of an instance where someone was denied because of geography or whatever? I've seen limits put on them, but I've, to my experience, I've never seen anyone denied. Pardon me?
Opposition by the neighbors, yes.
Like, I, I just, I've not, can you name a, a place? I've never, um, experienced it and I kinda been paying attention to what goes on here for a while.
That's for package stores, so you may be right, there was a package store where we certainly denied it for that reason, but I'm not sure if it was for a restaurant.
Got a good point. I don't, I don't think it's ever, as far as I know, and I mean, I worked in bars and restaurants before I started making this my hobby. And, um, I don't think I've ever recall anyone ever being denied. And especially if you have the ability to, um, well, someone made a complaint about noise, that's completely separate. Anybody can make a complaint about noise and it can be dealt with by the police with the laws that we have. I just, I, I, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I don't wanna, it's a very nice neighborhood, I used to work there a lot. It's, it's an amazing neighborhood, it's very close. It's like America used to be, everybody watches everybody's kids. I mean, nobody speeds down or anything, I mean, it's just a tight neighborhood. I, I'm there a lot and I just don't see the kind of things you see in a lot of the other neighborhoods. It's a very nice, tight neighborhood. And again, back to my original point, I don't recall anybody ever being denied with a common victual license and a record of, pretty much spotless, I think, of being denied.
Thank you, Mark. All right, ma'am, if you wanna come on up. Enter yourself.
Yes, Carolyn. Halloran, eighty-five Wicker Tree Road, North Falmouth. I have nothing against Mike or Harley, their family. They have helped us with the association with some, with some things and we appreciate that. I'm just, you know, again, I have forty years I've been down here and it's been fantastic. And my kids are of that age where they can ride their bikes by themselves. I'm here because I don't believe that, um, I, the premises is surrounded by six hundred residential homes and not one of them is a commercial estab- establishment. Um, every one of these homes has children, grandchildren or both during the summer. And I feel that the potential of a negative, the potential negative effects of a seven-day-a-week license, liquor license, with respect to traffic, parking, public safety, public health, noise trash and public disturbances, shouldn't be underestimated. I also believe that, um, statements or arguments by the applicant as to the financial viability of their business with and without the license should be respectively, um, brush, irrelevant to the fact that the Tea Room has been successfully run and operated without a liquor license for many, many years. So that being said, I think that, um, it would be a privilege to be granted a liquor license in the town of Falmouth. And I think that that privilege should be taken, I, you, I know you guys take it seriously, but I just, again, with everything else that's been said tonight in opposition to, um, I just want you to believe, um, hear my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know you also sent an email, so thank you.
Can I move and close the hearing?
Okay. Have a motion to?
Actually, can I ask the advocate one more question?
Yes.
Have you or your wife ever worked in a restaurant that served alcohol?
My wife has.
You have, your wife has, okay, great, thank you.
We have the, uh, application materials included her resume, uh, which show that she's worked in the, uh, restaurant industry since nineteen ninety-six, including, uh, a, a couple of different, uh, alcohol-serving establishments and have provided reference, current references for those places.
As you mentioned, the, your initial application is huge. We don't always get that full application in our packet, so I don't. And were butters notices submitted to the office?
Yes. Uh, we sent them out on a timely basis, uh, on August thirteenth and have received, uh, there were eleven of butters that were in the three-hundred-foot radius, no churches or schools. And we received, uh, five of the eleven, uh, green cards back. The others are, are still in transit. One was, uh, was refused, the others, uh, accepted.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
For the applicant, so if as a, for instance, um, since this is an early application and the, the justification for that we discussed was probably for preparation and expenditures of, of monies for next year, would it, how would it affect your business if this board were to put, uh, sort of hours of limitation, for example, Friday and Saturday, you know, four to eight or something? How would that affect your business to the plus or minus?
Well, um, someone spoke about Sunday night, movie night for the kids. Our original plan was that the parents who are already sitting on our property waiting for the kids to come back would be our customers. So, you know, um, the reality is we probably would be closing at nine, um, every night. Would we even be open Monday, Tuesday? I, I'm not quite sure, there's not a lot of people down there. We're not looking to be open till eleven. We just picked the number only because, based on, um, the couple of functions that we have every, uh, every year. Illumination night, you know, Fourth of July is a big night down there. Uh, Fourth of July, this past year had to close, there were so many teenage kids all over. And we had a bunch of little kids wanting to play, but it just became dangerous, so we closed the doors. If that's the case, that's what we're gonna do again. We're just looking to serve the community and seeing how thirty, forty, maybe fifty percent of them might not be coming in anymore. Maybe it's not a good idea anyway. But I'm gonna do whatever you folks tell me I have to do and we'll make it work regardless.
You stand?
Would you accept the limitation to just wine and malt liquor, malt beverages, beer-type beverages?
I suppose I would entertain anything. Our vision was to make nice handcrafted cocktail, not something you're gonna have twelve of, not highballs. We don't envision having twenty-five kinds of vodka in a huge bar. What we wanna make is a mojito with fresh, um, herbs and, you know, crush it up and have the experience, or a sangria. That's what we wanted to do, serve along with some food.
All right, well, I guess I'm asking if we restricted you to wine and malt beverages.
Can we do that?
That's not what they're asking, right?
No, but I'm, I'm asking, because that's kind of...
I don't think we can, but they could apply for that instead.
Exactly, well, that's, that's what I'm coming around to, so...
Well, would that be something that we could, you know, expand upon on the following year?
You can always, you can always apply for a different license.
I have to defer to my counsel, whatever he thinks, but...
Yep.
I'm glad to hear that you're here planning for next year, because I think it's a little early in the planning stage. And when Mr. Murphy said that, you know, it's not fair to ask you to build it and then approve it, I certainly agree with that, but I do think it'd be fair to ask you to have a clear plan on paper that we can really understand and endorse if we feel like we're ready to do that.
I understand that. I actually, I feel bad that you don't have better understanding, because Mr. Jones was in there the other day, so maybe he could understand a little bit more. Is by moving a few items, that room is totally closed off. There is no access for the kids. They have two means of egress. They can get their slush, candy, they have seating, they have games. Their parents can see over that wall if they happen to be on the other side getting something. Or, as I understand, at some, most places, the ninety-nine or wherever you go in with your parent.
Right.
You know, ten and go up to the, you know, ninety-nine by yourself. So, we're a little bit different. But we would make it almost like two different places. The tea room's on one side, and the ship's on the other side. So, two different registers, two different counters, it's totally delineated, and it is that wall that's in the middle.
Right.
It's just, I'm...
You understand my point.
I do understand.
I'm pretty good at reading plans myself, but I just don't see that stuff really on there yet, so I...
Oh, I understand completely.
I hear what you're saying.
Anything else from the board?
May I move to close the hearing?
Do a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, any discussion on people's thoughts on this particular license request? Sam?
Well, I know, I certainly believe we have to have better specifications on the layout of the, of the restaurant itself. And what we've seen so far is not something you could use to go in there and, and do an inspection on at this point.
Either for serving or storing.
Correct.
I have a question of town council. Mr. Duffy, can I ask if the, if, is it procedurally possible for the board to revoke and continue this and ask for a more specific diagram?
I have been following this, and I think, I agree with some of the comments here, it's a rather sketchy plan. And I think when you're going to continue, condition the license, you're going to have concerns about specific locations, you need a better plan. But in order to consider new evidence, you've got to reopen the hearing, so I would revoke that, close the hearing.
That is exactly my question. I'd like to ask to reconsider the motion to close the hearing. So, to revoke it? Correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so then you'd be looking...
You opposed?
Yeah, I, I think we have the information we need to make for the decision for this year.
That was...
Well, we've taken the vote, so we can, but I, of course, accept the explanation.
So, at this point in time, we can either make the decision right now, or...
We can't make a decision with the hearing open.
So, I think you're probably going to move to...
Continue.
Continue the hearing to another date, so that the applicant has time to put a better... I think you're hearing the concern from the board that we really do need something more substantive to make a decision on, both looking at the space where service is going to be, as well as space where the alcohol would be stored.
Okay, I really feel that we should go back to closing the hearing, make the decision this year. We're talking August nineteenth for seasonal license for this year. I see no reason to grant, we will not be granting a license really for this year. It is all completely on paper. I'd rather, and then I think that we need to be considering this license as a new license for next year when we consider it not as a renewal, because we will not have the information you get from a establishment that's actually served alcohol, which is what you usually would get with a renewal.
I have a question. Are you, are the applicants year-round residents? Is it convenient for you to continue this process during the upseason? Or is that, is there a reason why you're doing it at this time, other than just trying to plan it?
I'll do it whenever I have to.
You'll be around?
I'd be thinking of a month.
I think just to point out what, what Doug is saying is that the, we would then be granting...
A seasonal license after the season.
If that's what we did, once the season is done. So, it's really, I understand what, what you're saying in terms of renewal being a slightly sort of different animal. But I think Doug's point is well-made, that generally a renewal is a different animal because you have some data to, to back it up, and to say, this was a great, you know, that there were no police calls there, and there were no issues with underage. So, in a way, it's, you know, you go through all of that effort for a license, it is, is pretty meaningless.
So, given the timing and the fact that the continuance would push us into essentially the end of the season, would the board be willing to entertain withdrawal of the application without prejudice? And we would apply in the spring next year?
That was a question I actually was going to ask, as to whether it's necessary or not. I mean, I think if we vote against it, that a liquor hearing doesn't necessarily have prejudice involved in it. That just because we didn't approve this application has no bearing on what we would do next year. I just know I could not approve this application for all alcohol with the plan that's been for us.
Right, and so that's, I mean, even though you're, you're correct, there's still a prejudicial element to having a denial on the record, and, you know, a lock-and-change. And people's recollections, in a year, we'll be able to come back, have discussions with the town and the board, provide the additional information, folks, we can arrange for a site visit. And we won't have, you know, eight months from now, folks saying, well, you denied it last year, so...
And with the community.
Right, I was just going to say, I, I think we've heard tonight that some of the concern is sort of the last, sort of, you know, eleventh-hour community conversations, that I think a lot of people learned tonight, some more details. So, maybe that community component can, one second, Doug, I just want to ask Frank. I'm guessing that any applicant has the ability to ask to withdraw their petition. I just want to confirm with you that that can be done?
Yes, I believe it can be done.
Okay.
At least if the hearing's open again, which it is, so unfortunately, it's open again.
Yes, Doug.
You had that option.
A lot of the people who were not in favor of currently granting this license were also very supportive of you and your family's past efforts. And also, I spoke with Mr. Dynan prior to the meeting, and he said there was a lot more people supporting in the area than what was visible from these emails, although we have a lot of emails. So, what I would suggest, maybe you can consider going back to the neighborhood association, try to get a consensus from the association of what's really desired. Then maybe you would designate it's your place for residents only, so you don't get an influx of vehicles from out of town. Just a couple of thoughts I have while we're looking at this.
So, did you want to put forward your request?
Yes, I'd like to formally put forward a request, just to withdraw the application, yes. Without prejudice.
Do you have a motion to accept that request? I don't think we even have to do anything, I think you just have the right to, all right, so. So, I just want to say thank you to everyone here. I think, you know, it was helpful to, to hear what some of your plans are. I think people got some new information. I also think it was helpful for you to maybe hear from the community. And thank you to everyone for really being respectful and abiding by the requests about just being respectful and being a community. So, thank you.
Just a five-minute recess to empty the room.
Yes, and can we just take a five-minute recess so folks can exit before we start to the next... We have a lot of business left. Okay, we're resuming our meeting for August nineteenth. Next, we have, I don't know why I'm yelling, let me just...
All those people are on.
There's still some background noise.
Disruptive crowd out there.
That's right. All right, we have interview, vote, and appoint committee members. Conservation Commission, Susan Warren. Hello, welcome, please come on up. If you can just lift up the microphone there, so that, great. Thank you, and this is for one alternate member vacancy that's open for a term that ends six thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Welcome, we received your application. Any questions for Ms. Warren?
I just have one question.
Yes.
I noticed on your application that you're a big environmental advocate and supportive of a lot of environmental issues. And that's an excellent thing to have on Conservation Commission. What I've been asking all the Conservation Commission applicants lately is, will you also be open-minded to potential projects that may extend the life of our roadways in conservation areas? Or will you be strictly an environmental advocate to the end?
That sounds like a loaded question.
It's a tough one.
But I'll, I'll do the best I can to answer it. I, I try to be as open-minded as possible. I think, on the one hand, right now in our country with so many regulations getting rolled back, it's really important to have a local advocacy for conservation. On the other hand, we have infrastructure problems, and when I look at, we live on Siders Pond, so we actually live on conservation land. We also lived on conservation land before we moved down here. We lived in Wellesley Hills, and we lived on conservation, another town that's very active in conservation work. And so, while I am a real proponent of conservation, I also can see that we have traffic problems in this town over, I can hardly even get on Palmer Ave these days. And so, I think what, what I feel is needed actually on the Conservation Commission is open-mindedness to the residents in this town and what they want to do in addition to what's best for the wildlife. So, I would hope I could be balanced in my judgment and my input to that. One of the, one of the things that I've always been known for in my career is open-mindedness, good listener, and a team player. So, I would hope that I could be open to lots of different arguments and listen and weigh, balance them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, specifically on that line, how do you deal with the vista of Siders Pond at your house?
How do we deal with it? We've come to conservation for an approved project.
And so, are you just maintaining it, or do you, is your project to actually improve it?
It's to improve it. It's to improve the vista and also maintain it.
And they, and how was your, how did the process, did you find the process went as an applicant to the Conservation Commission? My mother's house is four houses down from you, and I'm just trying to...
Really? Okay, okay.
He's looking for precedent.
Well, I like your question, if that's an answer to your question. It's a very pertinent question, yeah. But on the other hand, I found it was fair. And at the end of the day, you know, we got what we want, and we also are preserving the wildlife there, which is why we got that property in the first place.
Good.
Okay, thank you, any other, yep, Sam?
Well, if you've been through one of their hearing processes, you, I guess you realize that the Conservation Commission has to act in accordance with the regulations. And it's not a question of opinion as to what, in fact, they finally decide. They're weighing in on the facts and deciding whether it fits within the regulations or not.
Correct.
So, you understand your role if you become a member of the commission?
Absolutely, but, you know, I, I think to both of your points. There's regulations, and then there's changing circumstances. And I think, obviously, you have to go by the regulations.
Sometimes you can find a way to work within the regulations.
Or what's available within, there's many things available within the regulations, right?
It's interpretation.
Invariances can, can be granted if a Conservation Commission wants to.
That's correct. And there's also the, the advocacy role of going to a town meeting and ask for changes in bylaws and such.
Correct, yeah. Any further questions?
I'd move to appoint Susan Warren to a term as an alternate ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for serving.
Okay, next, we have an applicant for a solid waste advisory committee. There's one vacancy, six thirty, twenty-two, and we have one applicant, Zachary Ellis. Come on up. And I know you've applied for, solid waste advisor was your first choice. You also applied for energy committee, so we'll just put both of those out there, so folks can ask questions about either. Welcome, do anyone, does anyone have questions for Mr. Ellis?
Well, I guess my first question is, was solid waste your first choice, or was it just the way it came out?
No, that was, that was my first choice. I think that's what I'm most interested in, as I was going down the list, it looked most fun.
And what made you choose that?
Um, I think it started with my dad. My dad and mom have always beat it down under their children to recycle and solid waste disposal. And hearing my dad complain about the born landfill growing up, I think that's always been a passion.
It scarred you for life, and now you're trying to work through it.
A lot of my science projects at the Falmouth High School were recycling-related, so that's always something that's been on my mind. I have a degree in poli sci, and right now, my current job is kind of unfulfilling, so this is kind of stepping into doing something a little bit more meaningful.
That's great.
Okay, I like that answer.
Wonderful. Any other questions for Mr. Ellis?
I'm told, yeah.
Yeah, it's very relevant, because we're really, we're going to hear tonight about some updates about, you know, some of the education we want to do around recycling, education and outreach. So, obviously, you know, the, the world has kind of changed in terms of recycling, big changes, and so it's a great time to be part of Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is a really great committee. They have a lot of challenges in front of them and some exciting work that needs to get done, so...
I'll move that we appoint Zachary Ellis to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for a term ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a report from the Veterans Council Committee. Is anyone doing that? No?
Hmm.
Who was invited?
Who was invited? Who had made the request, do you know?
I don't, I assume the chair of Veterans Council Committee, but I'm not certain.
I thought that Mr. Mustafa was hanging, was gonna... No, I know, I thought maybe you were standing in to...
I guess we'll go right to the...
Okay, so we'll, we'll table that, and we'll, we'll...
That's a surprise.
Yeah, okay. Maybe there was a confusion with that, we'll get, we'll address it. So, next, we have annual committee reappointment for Veterans Council Committee.
You might want to just point out that that one, the other one had been removed by their request.
Oh, yes, just, thank you. Just so folks know, number three, Recreation's Field Report. The Recreation Committee requested for that to be postponed because Joe Olenek is on vacation, and we obviously want him here when that happens, so... Okay, we're going to move to annual committee reappointment, Veterans Council Committee.
I move that we appoint Robert Exera as the representative of the American Legion Post one eighty-eight, term ending June thirty, two thousand twenty.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Sue, so would you just follow up with that other committee report, so we can find out?
I will, I will, we'll clarify what occurred.
We'll clarify what occurred.
Thank you. All right, we have a Chappaquoy Beach status update. Mr. Suso, do you want to speak to that particular issue?
Yes, I'm happy to. Just in a nutshell, Madam Chair, as you know, we've been engaged in a, working with Public Works on a survey of that entire area, the roadway, the parking area, and the public properties as well in the Chappaquoy area, and we're working with Deputy Public Works Director Peter McConerty and others in that regard. We do have some draft information available, and we are in the midst of a review and anticipate we'll be bringing that forward to the Board of Selectmen at a future meeting for potential adjustments for the next, the coming beach season. And, but that is a, we want to be very careful to have accurate information, and that is why we're doing the survey, to determine what impact, if any, it may for instance have on conservation and their rules and regulations, and the existing boundary and information on the beach itself.
Quick question on that. So with the goal of what?
Of making whatever adjustments the Board of Selectmen determines, presumably in collaboration with the Beach Committee for the 2020 beach season.
For, I mean, as to the parking standing issue in particular, or other...
All of that, boundaries, parking, roadway access, pedestrian access, et cetera.
And as to side, right up through that sidewalk where there's some, I know I emailed a picture of a toll.
Yes.
So it's going to extend all the way to potentially the bridge?
Well, we haven't nailed that down. I mean, ultimately, the Board will determine that, but we're not limiting the analysis, that's why it's taking a little bit of time to do properly.
Okay, so that's part of the survey information?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, the survey, the road area, all that parking lot area, so it's taken...
Is one of the considerations investigating whether or not that parking barrier could be moved back and create enough space?
That is among several considerations, yes.
I will say, I went out there this week and just drove it, because I've been thinking all this time that easily the traffic could do what they do in Woods Hole in front of Pine in the Sky, just wait for the next car to go and then take your turn, but with the way the vegetation has grown in so heavily, it's not the same now. You really can't see the far end of that curve, so it is more difficult than what I had been envisioning. I hadn't been out there for a while.
How many spots were lost with the, or how many cars could live park?
Four to six, I think.
So we're talking, we've lost four to six, I mean, because...
Right, four to six?
In the old system, you had four to six cars live parking, and everybody else was doing what they're now doing.
Actually, no. It was, it was built, there really wasn't live parking.
Wasn't supposed to be like, right.
No parking.
Yeah.
But that's what people did. On a complaint basis. In the past, they did live parking, and if there was, if the live parking line was full, they had to do what they're now doing. And so all it was really is that we've lost four or five spots.
Well, we built live parking and then didn't allow live parking, so there never, it was built, but it wasn't, it's not used yet, so we're trying to figure out how to adjust things to make it use.
Well, I think they took away the sidewalk thinking there might be, it might address some of the issues, but then the size of the road still isn't in compliance.
Right.
And that's, so I think it was taken away thinking it might accommodate some live parking, but at the end of the day, it still doesn't have that width.
But the only thing live parking would have done is create four waiting spots, or five waiting spots, which if you could create five...
To share a same five. Dan says five, he knows.
And...
Seven?
Oh, Dan says seven, okay.
The better thing is if we could find seven more spots in the lot, that'd actually even better than live parking.
Agreed.
The whole thing's being looked at, which is why they did the survey...
That's why we're taking the big look.
Yes, which is why that's what was asked of the people.
It's not just as simple as where a roadway boundary may or may not fall.
I just hope that people out there aren't looking, oh, the live parking would solve the problem, say, no, the live parking just makes the problem the same for, for less cars.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. We're attempting to seek a resolution that actually addresses the concerns and doesn't just put a Band-Aid on them or carry them forward, or shift the burden to the police department and say, have a nice day.
Okay. Dan, did you want to speak on that at all?
Yes, we had a terrible program, problems on July 4th, and we had them all over town, and this happened. I'm also an owner of a property on Chappaquoy Island. We have been complaining about this for seven years that I can remember, and at the beginning of the season, having the sidewalk gone, it was walked, it was, it was working. You could get three cars through there. You couldn't get a dump truck, you probably couldn't get a fire engine, but it was better than it's ever been in my 70 years there. However, you have a turnaround for people to go. Of course, that is on private property, it isn't owned by the town.
We've confirmed it's owned by the town. We have a survey accordingly that's been presented to us.
Okay, well...
Which we'll bring to the...
I took a tax reduction on it, so, okay. Anyway, when I gave it to the salt pond, it's, but what you're trying to do now is not worth it. Let it go the way it is and working out. I mean, moving that, the railing there is going to be a large expense, and you're going to be able to get it probably three feet, put it in, you can knock it down, but it's somewhat working now. We haven't had many problems. I'm on the beach twice a day, and it's not a disaster. What the people that, and it's, what the people in West Falmouth don't need it. However, over 50% of the cars that come into that parking lot are from East Falmouth, and that's, well, it's something they're going to have to use their own beaches for then, because there is no place to go after you put up the lot full sign except back over the bridge and out to 28, or park at the West Falmouth Library and walk. So I don't know, I'm just, hate to spend taxpayers' money, that's not going to really improve anything.
Thanks, Dan.
I thought we had, but I guess we haven't.
Well, that's part of why we're having the survey done, so we can take a look at what, if any, options are available, and I think you highlight a good point, which is, first and foremost, public safety is a thing that this Board is going to consider. So certainly an option that narrows the road to a point where vehicles, you know, fire, rescue can't get down. I know that's been a concern in the past, and so that'll be something that will be addressed. Yep, Dr. Schneider, go ahead, Sam, while Dr. Schneider's coming up.
Yeah, I just wanted to know whether, I know in the Goodwill Park area, they started using those signs to basically tell people that it's full. Could you not put a sign at the intersection of Old Dock Road and Chappaquoy Road and basically tell people, you're not going to find any place to park if you go any further? At least it gives, it makes it easier for them just to cycle out.
Oh, like they're doing at Goodwill Park, you're saying?
Yeah.
It's a great suggestion, but I just want to remind people, that's all on the town website now. Once the, once the beach is full, we post it on town website, so anyone who has, who has internet access can confirm that without need for a sign, but we're happy to utilize signage as well.
Yep, I'm not sure everybody that comes to town, you know, and wants to get to the beach is going to bother to check that.
Well, remember, it's a resident-only, you know, it's a sticker-only parking, so those who are visiting from out of town likely don't have a parking sticker to use Chappaquoy. You have to have a sticker to use it.
And although that's a great idea, a lot of people are going to say, well, we don't know if that's really updated, and they're going to see the sign and say, I don't trust that.
One person goes out and thinks it's not full anymore.
Yeah.
But I will say, we've used it at Goodwill Park, and I think it's helped a lot this season at Goodwill Park.
Well, there it was, great, because you can see that, that's it. There's a lot, the gate's right there.
Dr. Schneider?
I just would like to take an opportunity to say, make a correction. Mr. Shearer, you don't have West Falmouth Beach, and I don't have East Falmouth Beach. We have all Falmouth beaches, and I just wanted to make sure that your statement about maybe East Falmouth should use their own beaches, if I'm coming over to Woodneck, watch out, I'm going to use it anyway. All right, just wanted to say.
I would just want to move on.
I don't know if you want, you're digging deeper, Dan.
If you've ever, no, if you've ever come to a beach committee or, or meeting and someone says, my beach, I correct them. No, there is, nobody has their beach. The town of Falmouth owns the beaches, the, or the people that have the stickers own the right to use every beach in town. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, great. Great, thank you. So we'll be coming back with some of those specifics from that, from that survey and all of that, that study that's going on with that. All right, we have a signed variance, off-premise, special event signage, Buzzards Bay Watershed Ride. This is the ride that we just approved earlier, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I would move approval.
I would move approval. What Doug said, and I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Follow-up discussion on the Williams Hollow Road abandoned house. Mr. Suso, did you want to, want to add anything?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You members of the Board will recall, at your last regular meeting, there was a discussion about, as to whether the Board wishes to reverse course and rather than demolish the house in Williams Hollow for which funding had been voted by town meeting, we may prefer to consider that for a potential creation of an affordable housing unit, and we would seek the Board's direction on that.
Great, and we had heard from a lot of folks at our last meeting, and we had indicated that we would give a little bit of time to see if there were any more specifics from the group of individuals who are interested in maybe offering a different sort of trajectory for this home. So I don't know if, yep, see Ms. Bissonette here, if she wants to come in?
I have a PowerPoint, it's on my, here. I was on vacation last meeting, but, thank you.
But you heard about it, huh?
I watched it. I watched it after that. Okay. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss, I believe we call it the Baker House on Williams Hollow Road. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Karen Bissonette, I'm the Executive Director of Falmouth Housing Trust, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to create workforce housing, either to build new or to renovate. So we're here tonight to try to convince the Select Board to save this property, and my understanding, as all of you heard, that it was acquired in 1967 for the purposes of municipal and water resource purposes. When I watched this video from the August 5th meeting, people kept putting that together and making it one, like municipal water resource, but I want to make it clear to people, not on this Board, but other people, it's municipal and water resource purposes. And I am grateful for my Board members, Joanne O'Sullivan and Addie Drolette, who were here, and good citizen Mike Duffany for speaking up on this issue last time. I think that we can all agree that affordable housing is one of the most urgent needs in this community. At the CPC meeting in March, which was a public hearing, it was the topic that superseded all other under their purview. And I've listened to the arguments that I watched on, on the video, and so I'm here to hopefully enlighten people about affordable housing and about this property. This picture of this beautiful home is one that Falmouth Housing Trust sold to an affordable homeowner April 12th of this year. And it is a deed-restricted home sold to a Falmouth native who is a single dad of two boys, nine and 12 years old. The deed restriction is in perpetuity, and even if this current homeowner sells the property, the deed restriction stays, and it's so, as sold as an affordable home. The owner of this house is in food service in Woods Hole and was living in a one-bedroom apartment for $1,200 prior to purchasing this home. The reason he was so excited is because his rent was going up to $1,800 for a one-bedroom, six months after a new homeowner, a new landlord purchased the property. After buying this house, his mortgage and taxes are $1,200 a month. He is a hard-working man who works in an industry that is key to our economic survival, and as are many of the people who are looking for affordable homes in Falmouth. I show this house for a couple reasons. One of the arguments for not renovating the Baker House is that Williams Hollow Road is, I heard several times, is not an appropriate setting for an affordable house because of the conditions of the road and the proximity to, I heard someone say, a convenience store. So this is Deer Pond Road where this house is currently, and it is .45 miles from Blacksmith Shop Road. It's a very challenging and sometimes treacherous road. However, there is a beautiful affordable house there with a wonderful family, and so, and there were, there were a lot of people that showed up to purchase this house, that were interested in purchasing this house. In addition, there were applications at Town Hall that had to be replenished because there was so much interest. And I don't think that this house is very convenient to a convenience store as well, but it is a wonderful place for an affordable home. It's a very densely wooded area. This did not stop the development of other homes in this area, which began in the 1980s. In fact, this property was purchased in the 1970s and then given to Falmouth Housing Trust for the, for the purpose of building an affordable home there. When I first called the neighbors on either side of this property, that had been there some 30 years, Mr. Sagerman, Robert Sagerman, said to me that he was very happy that that's what was going to happen with this property, and that he was hoping that there would be children in the neighborhood again. Now I show you the Baker House, which sits on Williams Hollow Road. These pictures were taken the same day as the picture, this was the Enterprise picture, but the road was the same day. This is Williams Hollow Road. This driveway to, to the Baker House is .15 miles from Sam Turner Road, and it is, as you can see, in far better shape, and actually a pleasure to drive down after being on Deer Pond Road.
Quick question, Karen.
Thanks.
So the reason it looks so nice is because it's a consortium of neighbors that pitch in and take care of it, and one of the things the Board talked about was working with the neighbors who seemed to be amenable to creating an association.
Yep, I'm getting to that.
Yay, thank you.
Okay. So .15 miles from Sam Turner Road, and I heard Megan talk about bus stops, you know, because she was from that area. So the bus stop will be where the children are, and I think that our school accommodates that, so I'm not worried about a bus stop if there are children. So now I'm going to show you the income, the area median income. So Falmouth Housing Trust works within this 80% of area median income. So people that are eligible for the homes that we build, this is, this is their income eligibility. So those purchasing the home would be at 80% of area median income, and they also have to be able to qualify for a mortgage. So we're not talking about indigent people who have no cars. We're talking about hard-working people who do things in our community that we should welcome them in our community because there's going to be no one here to do them if, if we cannot provide housing for, for those people that are looking for housing.
I just, can I just stop, we should, I just, and I know you don't mean it this way, but I don't want the message to be for folks that we also welcome people who are indigent, because...
We do.
...people also have lots of important things that they provide to a community. I understand that you're pointing out the requirements and what you do, but I just want people, you know, indigent folks also should have housing, very nice housing, and there are services.
And we're having a lot built in our community for that as we speak, which is a wonderful thing. So those purchasing affordable homes are a member of our community who add value to Falmouth and who work in jobs that are crucial to our local economy and our way of life. Falmouth's lack of affordable housing is an obstacle to attracting and retaining a talented workforce. To retain this population, we need somewhere for these young, talented workforce to live, and only with the creation of ideas outside the box is this going to happen. We need this demographic here to supply the services that so many of us depend upon for our quality of life. My next slide will give you some assumption, my next slide... My next slide will give you some assumption, uh, my next slide shows you some of these people, um, that work within our community, and Barnstable County provides, uh, these annual incomes. So you can see, um, some of the sort of occupations of the people that we're talking about, um, that seek affordable housing. So, now I'm going to show you some assumptions, because it comes down to the money, doesn't it? So, um, assuming, um, that, uh, we sold the house on Deer Pond Road for a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That was a three-bedroom, two-bath house. This would be a two-bedroom, one-bath house. So, um, the sale price would be around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, I'm not going to go through this line by line, but what I did want to point out was that, um, we did put in here an assumption for a homeowners' association, for a fee. Now, I believe it was Mr. Buchanan who, um, spoke at the last meeting, and he said that thirty thousand dollars had been spent over the last five years. And Mr. Weaver said there were eight houses, he said there were seven, I used, I was conservative, I used seven families. So if you take that seven families, it turns out to be about eight hundred and fifty dollars a year, and the hundred and twenty dollars a month is far greater than eight hundred and fifty dollars a year. And I'd also like to mention that, um, most recently, um, there was an affordable home that just sold in the last two weeks on Forest Cove for two hundred and one thousand dollars. But there's an assessment there of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a month.
Hundred and thirty?
I'm sorry, hundred and thirty dollars a month. And so, that is, that is kind of a normal thing when, when you have that.
But, the, it really went to, how is the association going to come about? They, they're going to need a lawyer, they're gonna, like, I just don't, I don't know if that's included in that number.
But I don't really understand, Sue, why this person's different than any other person that's on that. Why the person
Only because it's voluntary.
I understand.
I live in
Sam can tell you, I live in a neighborhood where we have a voluntary contribution. But the people that live there now, it's voluntary. Those people don't have to pay either, correct?
Well, they don't have to, but in order to have sort of the poles and things, so I guess one of the things that we talked about, um, as perhaps sort of a, an added value to the community would be to help them create, um, sort of a more, not, not sort of, a, an association where you would pay those dues and that's part of the ownership in that, that community. So that it would be
I'm sure that's going to be worked out, but this person is not going to be responsible for doing that. I would think it would be the current homeowners that would be responsible for that, to come up with some sort of association. Because they don't have one now, correct?
Right, there, there isn't one now, right.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is, is that if you look at the numbers, I think there, there was concern that someone making the amount of money that qualified for that house would not be able to afford that. And what I'm showing you here is that this percentage of housing is twenty-eight percent. And we say that a hu- a house is affordable if it's thirty percent not.
I didn't read it that way at all. I thought these folks were really welcoming the possibility, but wanted to know if, if whomever wanted this to happen could assist them in making an association so that that was part of it going forward. They were looking at it as working together as neighbors and that that, that would be something that, that would, um, take care of that, something that, that they were looking at. They weren't, I didn't hear anyone from the neighborhood say they didn't think people could afford, you know, because they, anything. So I didn't really, I, I read it, I, who, all the people that were here that evening, they were kind of more trying to think about the logistics.
I guess I had that question as to whether
Someone said it, because I know.
I was not looking at purchase prices of one-seventy, because it, we, we right now know the cost of getting this house up and running is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so I was saying, if you're looking at that number, and then you use that number, there's no way they can afford two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the association fees, if they're going to be affordable. But if it's subsidized enough so they're not paying a hundred and seventy, and that's the numbers you're showing us, and it's, that's where I want someone saying, yes, we can subsidize this, we'll take care of that, so.
So, um, we're lucky enough to have, um, Mike Duffany involved, um, with this, um, and, um, he came up with those numbers, um, which I think are very fair numbers. And there is a contingency, a ten percent contingency in there as well. And I think that, uh, Mr. Suso suggested that Falmouth Housing Trust wouldn't be coming to the town, but I think he does understand that it couldn't be on their subsidized housing inventory if we didn't have a subsidy from the town.
Someone else mentioned that, and I asked to have it confirmed.
So, we would be coming because, um, uh, this, to me, is no different than a two-bedroom apartment that's being built over on, on Spring Bars right now. You know, um, it, it would be, you know, the sixty-five thousand dollars is about the going rate that the Affordable Housing Fund has been giving to each unit of housing. We, I think, um, we have already, I know that we can get, um, you know, Cake Pot Five is very good to us and that we would be able to, um, borrow money from them and, until we were able to build it and sell the house and, and thus pay them back, as we did for Fa- for the Deer Pond Road. So, um, these are the numbers, the, the soft costs, just so people understand, that's engineering permitting legal, the housing lottery hack, um, Housing Assistance Corp., um, did the housing lottery on the, on the last house for us, loan interest, closing costs. And then we were lucky enough to have architect Chris Warner, um, visit the property last week, and he quoted, and he's here tonight, and I'm quoting him. He said it's a slam dunk, he thought the property was, um, a, a very good project. And so, I guess what we're asking tonight, Falmouth Housing Trust, is asking that the town, um, place an article, that the selectmen place an article on the November warrant, uh, for an RFP for this property. And we, uh, are suggesting maybe two acres and having seventy-five percent of that be conservation, and that still leaves eighty-six acres for municipal wells. So, I am also asking you to let town meeting decide this, to see how important this subject might be to, um, other, to, to the town meeting members. And, um, because there's no perfect place for affordable housing, we all know that. And, um, you know, for us to solve this crisis, we're going to have to be creative, flexible, and bold. And without that, we'll never get another affordable house built. So, I thank you so much. I don't know if, um, Mr. Duffany wants to talk about the construction a little bit, maybe he would do that for us?
I can answer questions.
Yeah, does anyone have any questions? I mean, I don't want to get too detailed, but, you know, just maybe a sense about where the pricing came from. Sam, well, come on up.
Yeah, I, I, I actually drove out and looked at the property. A question I have is, is access to water. Does this require a, a well? Because I was led to believe that there might not be town water at this location.
Mr. Buchanan, is there town water out there?
Yeah, there's town water.
That's what I thought.
There is. Okay, thanks.
And there's a pole right out in front of this, um, right out in front of the house.
Yeah, I saw.
Not too far. Doug?
My question is, why the two acres?
Because I think it's zoned that way, and that was just my suggestion. If, if it was on point two-five acres, I wouldn't care. So, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. Um, as a matter of fact, Peter and I talked about this quite a while ago, I think it was in March, and, um, um, the town needs to decide how big it is. And we don't care how big it is, it could be, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Duffany, just in terms of, um, where sort of that estimate came from, or what that estimate includes, or anything?
And just one further, and that's the, uh, Title V septic system, does that price include putting one of those in? Thank you.
But, will it be required to be denitrifying out there?
We're hearing that it's not.
Okay.
According to Virginia, no.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Madam Chair, um, there've been some comments, again, about the Affordable Housing Fund. Could I have Peter just give a summary of the situation the board has with regard to that fund?
Which we had, which we had a bit of a summary of, so, just as a reminder.
A little update.
Yeah, no, no real, um, dramatic change, but I can be a little clearer now that I've had a chance to, um, to put some information together. So the current balance of the fund is about twenty thousand dollars. Um, the board has approved an additional three hundred twenty-five thousand for the Brick Hill Rental Housing Project, subject to appropriation at town meeting. The, um, consensus is that the request that is going to be placed by the CPC, um, on the November town meeting is an appropriation of four hundred twenty-five thousand for the fund, so that would leave a balance of a hundred twenty. We, uh, we have projects in the pipeline that we are aware of in various planning stages. They include ten units of additional housing for Gifford Street. And again, um, as the board is well aware, and we've talked about, under the HPP, eighty-five percent of the new housing to be created is targeted to be rental. And most of what the private market seems to be creating is homeownership. There is potentially a project that was, uh, there was an application submitted and withdrawn for another ten units of rental housing, uh, at the Clippership, the existing Clippership, uh, Affordable Housing Complex. And then there is a, another project, a substantial one that is in early exploration stages that, uh, the property sale, the property's not been, uh, acquired yet. But the, uh, the proposal is fifty-three units of rental housing at an existing location in Falmouth Village. And they would be looking for essentially all of the fund's money for a period of several years in order to create those fifty-three units. So, obviously, this is early exploration, I, you know, we're not even talking about the specific address. There is a specific address, but we're not, um, able to disclose it yet. So I, I want to be clear that we're not suggesting this is a fait accompli, that this is going to happen, this is just
Just to give us a sense of some of the
It's just a project that's being explored, so that as we consider sixty-five thousand dollars for this project, that you're aware of other projects that may be coming down the pipeline, competing for these same funds.
Could I just mention, um, Peter's brought up, and he brought it up at the last meeting as well, that the housing production plan, um, did recommend eighty-five percent rental versus fifteen percent homeownership. There's been one homeownership this last year, as far as I know, right? One, right? And it was mine.
It would be yours, that's right.
So, um, so, and I, and I wanted to sta- make a statement about that as well, is that, um, we have, um, you know, Falmouth Housing Corp.'s doing a great job in, in building those rentals, and they are a nonprofit. So they will not be paying taxes. Anytime Falmouth Housing Trust builds a home and sells it, that person is paying taxes. So you're going to recoup that money at some point, it may be a little while, but it is, it goes on the tax rolls and, and so, um, they are paying taxes. So the homeownership people pay taxes. Even though we are a nonprofit, once we sell it to someone, they are not a nonprofit, so, um, they are paying taxes on that. The other thing is too, um, and you've heard me say this before, is that the town really needs to do something about affordable housing funding. It, we cannot keep depending on the community preservation money. I mean, how many years ago did, uh, Peter Boyer had the vision to, uh, borrow money for open space, right? And we borrowed, what, twenty or thirty million dollars for open space? And so, we have a lot of open space in Falmouth. I would think that all of us would think that affordable housing is as important or more important than the open space at this point in time. So to depend on the CPC money, I just think that it's just not realistic.
Go ahead, Sue.
I have another question for Mike, um, if you don't mind, I, I know you don't need the exercise, it just came to me now. The, um, so, a house, uh, like the one we're looking at, what's the difference between, in cost, from building a new house versus rehabbing, uh, a house such as this with a lot of stonework and sort of some complicated, uh, elements to it?
You wouldn't build this house today due to cost, because of that. But the fact that the foundation and the steps, there's two or three sets of steps in there and a couple of chimneys, are all in good condition. And they're not going to require, there's very little, very, very little maintenance, and these be, you know, it was, it was a, a really nice job when it was done. The bones of the house are fur frame, so they're really good structural members that are in there that are in really good condition. So you have a house on a foundation that, you know, the excavation's behind us, and, you know, it does need a, a new Title V. It'll need a new water service brought into it, and it'll need a new overhead, um, electric service brought into it. But other than that, the house, you know, is, is ready, pretty much ready to, to start putting back together again.
Is there a oil tank?
I don't recall.
Karen's nodding yes.
Yeah, I don't recall there's a tank in there.
Thank you.
Any guess on what you think the value of that house is going to be after you do this?
One-seventy, I think, is what she told us.
No, no, that
But I mean, that, that house today, if you built that house today, it would sell for four hundred thousand all day long. You know, because of that, because of some of that element that it has.
I mean, the quality of the construction you're talking about, you're not doing today. So you're going to end up with a house that's going to be way, much higher value than what you're selling it for.
That's correct.
I think you said the quality of materials.
And, and they did a nice job building it as well. You really did, I mean, they did a bang-up job.
Great, thank you. Mr. Buchanan, did you want to come on up?
Just so you know, the house we built on Deer Palm was three hundred and five thousand dollars, not including the, the, um, property.
We don't disagree with, uh
Could you just introduce yourself? I, I know I said your name was Mr. Buchanan.
Bill Buchanan, one of the, one of the seven homeowners, uh, currently live on the road. We don't have any discussion about the cost of the house, rehabbing the house. Our issue, which they still haven't addressed, is the private dirt road maintenance, the private utility line that comes in there. Now, we, before we put the first five poles into that, uh, property, we contacted the electric company, asked them to come in and see if they would take over the property. I mean, take over the pole line. They said absolutely not, they came and assessed it. They said all the, they wouldn't take over any pole unless it was ten years or newer. I think the newest pole we have in there is thirty-five years. We put, so then we went ahead and we put the first five poles in. That cost, between the tree work and the poles, that was plus thirty thousand dollars. We did that in the last four or five years. There's still another eight to ten poles that need to be updated on that line. Two of the poles, it needs two more poles just to meet, to reach the, uh, Baker property. And then we have more poles on to that, to the rest of the house. It's, I don't think they have addressed any of the, any of the cost that's going to be, and it's, and we can't define it, because we don't know. It's not a, a definite cost of what it is, because we have maintenance all the time. A month ago, two years ago, we had the, those storms that we had in March, we paid three to four thousand dollars to have two trees taken down because the electric company wouldn't touch them, it's a private line. And we, before we could even have them come in and put the transmission lines on. They'll take care of the transmission lines, but we have to take care of the poles, the tree trimming, and then the road, we basically have to maintain anyways. And the, and the line is, is private. Now, the property that you say over on Deer, Deer Pond, is that road maintained by the town? Is the electric line owned by the electric company? Those are issues that, this property on Sam Turner Ro- uh, for, uh, uh, Sam Turner Road is not, not the same, uh, it's not apples for apples.
I think this was the concern that we had sort of hoped for a little bit more, um, just, you know, explanation or addressing.
You know, we're not addressing the cost of the house.
Right.
That's not an issue for us. Our, our issue is the private dirt road and the private utility line. And we don't think that's been addressed properly, and we don't know how they're going to address it. You know, is the town going to come in and beat bottom? Right now, the town is actually an owner of property on that road. And they've owned that property, what, for maybe twenty-five years?
Something like that.
And that property, they bought, I think it's about twenty-five acres with that, it's a ten-acre piece and an eighteen-acre piece and an eight-acre piece, I believe. So the house is on like a ten-acre parcel. So I'm assuming they probably just cut two acres off of that or whatever, but that's going to be engineering price. But I'm not going to get into that. I'm not concerned about the, and none of us are concerned about the cost of rehabbing the house. We just want to have some, how are they going to reimburse us for the private line that we have maintained through ever? I mean, I've been there thirty-five years, and I'm one of the youngest that's been in there. Everyone else has been there for ever and ever. The Williams family's owned that property since, some of, most of the property in there since nineteen twenty-five. That was my concern.
This is what the board was hoping would be addressed, you said it very nicely.
Sam?
Well, I guess I'm looking at it from the standpoint, if I were living in there, is the town going to help you out at all, Mr. Buchanan?
Never has.
Yeah, so I mean, you're, you're covering those costs already, and if you could get some support from a new owner, I mean, that would be a contribution you don't get right now, right? I understand it's not in the numbers.
Is there, Mr. Weaver?
Tom Weaver, I'm one of the residents. An issue that hasn't been talked about tonight is the purpose that the land was really purchased for, and that's water protection. It is one of two town-owned potential well sites. It is one of two town-owned potential well sites left, one of two. Currently, the Crooked Pond well supplies one-sixth of the town water. That was potentially up to one-quarter, and this is from Mr. Jack talking. This is something that we need to protect. Water is something that is incredibly precious. We take it for granted in New England. Go out west, you don't buy land, you buy water rights. That's what you're concerned with. We need to be concerned with that here. We need to protect any water source we have. Another thing is that this house, this road, these houses are within between two and three hundred feet of Crooked Pond. Conservation area. It is one of the few, if not only, pristine coastal ponds left in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This water is precious. We want to protect it, we want to protect the whole area. It's a water recharge area, the forest. Putting more septic in there, putting more housing in there, whatever, can cause damages to this. Water is precious, we need to protect it. That's why the town spent this money in nineteen eighty-seven. It was looking ahead. Thank you, town, keep doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Okay, any further discussion on this issue from the board?
You, did I see the number in there for the Home Association, where you saw that number?
Yes, yeah, we saw that. The, the issue really was, what this board was concerned about was what mechanism was going to be put in place? So that there was a guarantee of those funds for this. I, I understand your point, there's no association now, but these people have all lived in that area, and this is how they've operated. What their concern is, is whether it was affordable housing or not, bringing in another unit, you know, what, if, if that unit is going to sort of be on board with the exact same, you know, cost sharing? That this, this community has put in place. And that's really what they were, and that was some of what this board talked about, you know.
I saw in their pro forma, they were putting, you know, a hundred and twenty dollars every month to contribute to whatever the association needs to have done.
But, I'm not sure that includes putting in, there's no number for putting in new poles, for new, I mean, I think the.
There's some information, my name's Joanna Sullivan, I'm the president of Falmouth Housing Trust, and I walked the property with Karen, with the, another board member, with Chris Warner, the architect. And there is a pole adjacent to this property, it's about forty feet to the house. And there are houses past this property on the same road that are served by electricity and water right now. So it's not as if it's creating a whole new line. And when we walked the property, we were anticipating sinking the utilities, so that they would be underground. So they would not increase the likelihood of the pole there being damaged by the virtue of this house being there. So that's part of our game plan if it were to come about. As to the homeowners' association, I think it's a little unfair to expect one new homeowner to create an association structure? When folks have been there for thirty years and have not seen the need to do it. Why would one more homeowner be required to create that structure? And, and absorb the cost? I'm just trying to understand that.
So, I think that the concern that was raised is the fact that these costs vary, and they're very unexpected. And you have to have significant funds available to contribute at that time, when there's that time of need. So that's the unpredictability of living in that type of environment.
But if the homeowner is anticipating putting, what is it, fourteen hundred dollars a year aside for whatever future thing is going to happen? That's factored into the budget. I don't know how else to budget that unless you say only people that have, you know, fifty thousand dollars sitting in the bank are allowed to live on this road. Because they don't have a contingency plan for every possible scenario that could come down.
Right.
Right, not, I mean, not every possible scenario, some really likely scenarios, which are, you know, we can pretty much depend, there will be storms and have to have.
And based on the information that we were provided by members that have spent money there, the calculation came out to about eight hundred some dollars a year? When you average out what we were told the costs were, because there's no budget and no records of precisely what was spent when, it's anecdotal. Based on the information we were giving, it came down to roughly about eight hun, over eight hundred dollars a year. We're factoring in fourteen hundred dollars a year for this potential affordable home. So I think that's a reasonable response, given the information that we're provided, there's no documentation, just verbal.
Nobody asked for.
Yep, we, no, we can understand, we didn't ask.
Nobody asked for anything.
She's going to call you next.
Yep, you can come up and speak, we just can't have people speak from the audience, number one, because we just don't do it that way, number two, because folks at home can't hear you because of the. No, that's okay, you can come up and, and address that. So Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm sort of on the executive board of our particular association, it's a voluntary. We have a, a few people out of sixty-eight homes that don't pay their dues. They are not the poor people in our community. The poor people pay them, because they understand they're contributing to the welfare of the community. That was my first point. So, I, usually it's people who are every man for themselves mentality, and that's what decides whether they cough up the money or not. Most people want to be part of the community and contribute. Secondly, this home really doesn't create any more risk for the existing homeowners. They have to pick, cover those costs right now, regardless of whether there's a house with a family living there or not. So there might be the potential really of helping to share the load, based on, you know, somebody's willingness to contribute to the benefit of that little community. So I, I just wanted to make that point pretty clear, because I've had to go out and try to collect those dues. And I'm a, I'm absolutely amazed at the people who don't pay versus those that do. And it's not based on income.
Ma'am, did you want to?
We weren't asked to bring forth any numbers, hard numbers of what we've spent. If you want them, we'll find them, but it's constant. Tree work, every winter, trees come down on power lines. We lose power for one day, three days a week. And we can't drive in or out of the road often, because the power line is down on the road, covered in snow. Try to get somebody in to move trees when you have to drive someplace like that, they don't. It's, but if you want numbers, we'll get them. We were not asked for those numbers, we just, yeah, it was about this, kind of, maybe, that's all.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments from the board?
Madam Chair, if I, if I could just go back really briefly to the conversation about percentage that, of housing being generated, that's homeownership versus rental. And we talked about the number of town subsidized homeownership units, and the last year was one. But I do want to point out that without town subsidy, there are forty B projects that are twenty-five percent affordable. And those are all exclusively homeownership, such as Locust Field, Crooked Meadow, Wild Harbor, Helma Circle. So, and potentially Lantern Lane. So the, the private market is, is building those units almost exclusively.
Yes, Sam?
I, I don't want to pass up the opportunity to acknowledge Mr. Weaver's point about this being a water recharge area. And also the contribution of yet another septic system. Because I went to the Cape Cod, One Cape Summit, just a couple of weeks ago. You know, while we can talk about the cooperation and the planning and what have you that's going on to try to mitigate the environmental impacts. You look at the data, we haven't made any progress in actually decreasing that impact. The impact comes from the septic systems across Cape Cod. And every one that we add is adding to that pollution load in the aquifer, because we live on a very sandy, gravelly peninsula. Where the light goes into the ground comes out in our estuaries, if it doesn't evaporate beforehand. So, it is something we have to worry about. And it, eventually, I think we are going to have to look at regulations that require nitrogen-reducing septic systems. Because it's, the numbers indicate that thirty-five percent of the septic systems in Massachusetts are on Cape Cod. And we're only probably ten percent or less of the land area. So we are contributing to the problems that we have in our estuaries. So, my point is, we can't neglect the point that Mr. Weaver is raising about controlling the pollution that we're putting in the ground.
And the purpose that the parcel was purchased for.
And, and exactly, so we're trading off one more septic system, which I don't, I, I'm not suggesting that's the deciding factor. But I don't think we should neglect it either, I think it's a valid point. You know, we're, we definitely are putting a priority on putting, you know, large developments in areas that are sewed. This certainly is not an area that's sewed, but we have those kind of complexities that we have to deal with when we're dealing with a request like this.
But since what's being asked is that we put an RFP, we could include in the RFP that it have a de-nitrofying system. Not legislated, but we can say that's what the RFP says.
Yes.
It would make it more expensive, but it would make it more palatable to me if it had that system in there to say, we are actually honoring the water recharge area it's in.
And along those points, I suppose we could include in the RFP that there be some kind of process that. Same thing that Doug and I've been talking about, it, it's a, it's a, it could be an onerous burden for someone who purchases the house on an affordable basis? To all of a sudden have, you know, an extraordinary expense? And then to be kind of the lone person in the whole neighborhood that, to Sam's point, you can't come up with, you know, a big downstroke. So I'm wondering if there's a way we could somehow address that in the RFP.
I think we also need to consider our own responsibility, if we're going to put this out and say, here, this is an affordable house. It, it might not be the right fit for somebody who doesn't have a chainsaw and a snow shovel and some money in the bank? To deal with unexpected coincidences. So I don't know how, how really good of an environment it is for a person that's counting on affordability. So if, you know, just with that caveat, I don't know how you can, what would the RFP say, you know?
The RFP is only really for the building part of it, so I think, you know, that's, that's the, you know, complex piece of this. Is that obviously, anyone can have a tree fall down in your house. I mean, that can happen at the home that we saw as a, as an example, and that's an unexpected expense. I think the difference here is that there are just, it's more likely that there will be regular instances like this. It's just the nature of where this location is, so I think.
And the electric company's not going to come to this street.
I think the problem is the RFP is not going to be able to address who purchases the home. It's, the RFP is going to be about building the home. And yes, in an RFP, you could put a requirement for a de-nitrofying, septic, you could put all of those things in the RFP. But then, once it's, once a home is built, we don't have.
You could put a reserve for private electrical issues, or I, I don't know.
But I don't think you can for the homeowner, I don't think, do you know what I mean? You're only, the RFP is just for the builder. Once the home is built, then the homeowners come and, you know, they come to Falmouth Housing Trust, and they go through a mortgage process, and they go through their, their, you know, their process. But that wouldn't be anything that we would control in terms of that. So I mean, I think that they're, they're complicated issues.
Can I just speak to the D-Nite system as well? And Doug mentioned it, it's expensive. So to burden someone, to burden someone who doesn't, who doesn't qualify for affordable housing with a D-Nite? When, when, in reality, we're not even sure how good they are. But it, it's expensive. But also realize that when people qualify for this affordable house, they don't have to remain at that income, you know? They, they, they could, you know, their salary could be increased by thirty percent the next month if they change their job. It doesn't change that the fact that they bought that home. So, I mean, we're assuming that their salary is going to go up, but to ask someone to pay for a D-Nite system.
I'm not asking them, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, I think he said.
It's the yearly thing, it's the yearly, it's not, it's not, it's not the construction of it, which is.
But I think that's, that's, I mean, I think you understand, that's part of the, the complexity of this project.
That's right.
I mean, that's why this piece of.
That's correct.
Property, you know, it's, it's, it's attractive, because you don't have to buy the property.
That's correct.
It's not attractive, because.
It's not affordable if we had to buy the property.
It's in a very special, it's a very particular place, the town bought the property for a particular purpose. It has, it's not just on, you know, a kind of a road that has regular utilities maintained by the utility companies. So there, there's the, the pros and cons there.
And as a community, we have to decide our priorities. We have to decide, is having one more septic system, and i, is that more important than not having some, having someone stay in this community and contribute to this community? And those are not questions that we can answer tonight, but what I'm saying is, we have to put more thought as a community into affordable housing. We have to come up with some more money, we have to have some more regulations, and that can only come from you guys. So what I'm asking you to do is to really, you know, not just shake your heads and say, yes, I know it's a problem, we need to do something about it, so.
Well, this, I mean, I think, you know, no one on the board is just shaking their heads. I mean, I think this board puts a lot of time and effort and, you know, support behind it, so.
It's just a two-bedroom house only?
Yes.
That's the proposal for, for these numbers.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
No hurry.
Nancy Williams Troup. This, this house, Mrs. Baker's house, one of the things, it has two very small bedrooms. And the kitchen is not much bigger than three of these. It's got a very small sink and a couple of cupboards and a hot plate. And this is a summer house, and I don't know what she did for meals. The other thing about Crooked Pond, the Williams family have put a lot of acreage into conservation restriction. So, and just instinctively, over the years, we have been taking care of the, the pond and the land around it. And when, the house that I'm in now is fairly new. And when I went to pay the first real estate tax, I suggested it might be a little high. And the lady said, well, you live on a very good pond, so that, and it had a good builder. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other conversation, any thoughts, any motions from this board?
I think the request that's been asked of us is that we would put a town meeting article with, an article before town meeting with an RFP for this project.
I have no problem going back to town meeting and asking their opinion again. We did get their opinion before, and they said tear it down, but I have no problem with coming up with a way that we get their input on this.
Any other thoughts?
I'll second that.
I agree with that. So that's your motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll see what comes out.
So see what town meeting says? And I might.
So who writes that? You do?
Yeah, we can write that.
What's your warrant, you write your article, correct?
I was just checking, thank you.
And I would just say for, for the folks who live in the community, if, if members don't attend town meeting regularly, certainly you can come and speak. And some of those numbers that you talked about, Mr. Weaver, it might be helpful to have some more specifics, so that town meeting can understand really what, you know, if the thirty thousand is just kind of a guesstimate from Mr. Buchanan? Or, or what those numbers might be, so town meeting can make a decision with that information in front of them.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, we have a presentation of Seacoast Shores Association beach plan and request to file with Conservation Commission. Is anyone here for Seacoast Shores? Mr. Suso, do you know anything in particular about this, or?
Uh, they, yes, they were invited, and you have a copy of the PowerPoint, which was transmitted to us in preparation for a presentation to you this evening.
From Dan Frauley.
I'm not sure why Mr. Frauley's not here.
Okay, um, do I have a motion from the board? I don't know that, go ahead.
I guess I would move to continue it until, so we can.
Let's say, postponer. It's not a continuing.
I don't think we have to continue, we can just postpone it until we hear from Mr. Frauley about another date you can be here. Okay, with that motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we are going to talk about recycling, education, and outreach. Mr. Suso, do you just want to kick that off?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just in a nutshell, as you know, we've had some discussions. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in a nutshell, as you know, we've had some discussions involving some members of the staff. I know that, Madam Chair, you were able to attend one or more of those as well with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and I can confirm that Deputy Public Works Director Peter McConerty, who has been active in working with the committee on securing some state funding for education and related matters, is moving forward with a, a concept for an expanded public education and outreach program. And I anticipate that to unfold yet this calendar year.
And could you just address the issue? So let me just, let me just take a step back. We've talked about this a lot, the fact that, you know, we, we really need to do education around recycling in a, in a large way, not just in, Linda Davis is here and her plastic bag tutorial is very good, but we need something that reaches out to everybody in our community really about recycling. We know that there is sort of a lack of some clear information that comes from the town and the website is not always really clear for some folks about, we've had some critiques about some of the information that's on the website. And so I know Solid Waste has pointed out many times that under our contract, that education around this is required. And, you know, the bottom line is the town has funds. We don't really need to wait for someone else to do it. We really need to take it on and do some of the education ourself, ourselves. The other piece is, and I don't wanna, you know, get too far, put the cart too far in front of the horse, but we are gonna take a look at the idea of the potential of looking for FY, what year were we talking about? Twenty?
You're talking about the next year's budget, FY twenty-one?
Twenty-one, to see, you know, how we might be able to, and it's, it's in an early phase, but look at somebody who could be in charge of solid waste, maybe in a part-time capacity to address some of these issues in a proactive way. Rather than, and again, it's never a critique of Peter McConerty or anybody at DPW because this is a Herculean undertaking. So we're trying to come at it from a number of directions, but in the short term, really looking at some education. Have I missed anything that we were talking about, Peter or Julian?
No, I thi- I think that, I think you've covered it.
And obviously in working with Solid Waste to work on some of that education material, but really the town just taking the responsibility to do it and not wait for Republic to step up and do it, but we really need to do it.
Well said.
Dr. Snyder?
Couple things. Once, when we had the East Falmouth Village Association meeting, I called and said, can I get, this is a perfect opportunity to get the recycling demonstration right there. I mean, we just literally had a room filled with people. And walking past it just that day would have been so much education and it wasn't available. It was not available. We couldn't get our hands on it. We need to have little pop-up demonstrations of this all over the place at meetings like this and opportunities like this. Because that's what we heard over and over and over at our sessions that we held, that people don't get it. They don't know. I mean, just the idea of teaching people, yes, okay, you've got the divided garbage in your house now and you've got the recycling part and a lot of people line that with a plastic bag and then we're finding out that plastic bags around your recycling is why they're being refused the most. How easy is it to just put a paper bag inside your plastic bag so you're protecting your garbage, but you can just pick up the paper bag and throw it in your recycling barrel? I mean, these are just little things, but we should have those demonstrations. And the second thing I wanted to say is, you know that I've been doing a lot of work getting these all over town, all over. There, there can't be anywhere that you go that you don't see these now, but one place there is, and so Doug, I'm gonna ask you to take these and I hope you will get them around the academy. Thank you very much. And if there's anywhere else that people think of, I would love to hear it and I'll get more printed and be glad to do it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Quick thing. At the road race, I spoke with Carl Cabosa, who does a lot of volunteering at that event. And one thing he mentioned is it's the way, it's the solid food that's a huge issue. And he thought it would be a great thing to, you know, ask that, you know, maybe one of the Eagle Scout guys who might be interested in this or a high school student that, to just do a demonstration and do the numbers. And he thought that that would be sort of the single most important thing we could do to, to save, to, to solve this problem.
You mean around composting?
Or, exactly, just taking solid, taking food out of the system. He said it's the heaviest thing that they deal with.
The only trouble with is you have to put a system in place to do it. A composting facility like Mr. Cabosa proposed that, unfortunately didn't have quite enough acreage to do it efficiently and safely. But we can't just tell people to go down to the leaf dump and throw their food around because it creates a, a health hazard.
That, that'd be the next step, would be to find a solution.
Want to come up?
We have, we take it at the dump.
There is a.
There is a compost.
There is a demonstration project that where the, the town is, has a facility set up to take compost now.
It's not gonna enough to take, clearly, it's not set up for, on a grand scale.
Right.
But some people can do that. But again, I think, you know, the, it is a start and the other piece is just sort of, you know, Carrie always, Carrie who comes to the meetings, you know, has always really been very helpful about the fact that, you know, the composting is a part of all of this as well and there are things that, that, you know, we can do, but in the, in the, at the present time, we're not even really mastering our recycling. So there's definitely education we can do around that component because we're struggling with that. Sandy, do you wanna come and, go ahead, Sam, look.
Okay, yes. I just wanted to say that there are already models in place. My daughter lives in the Portland, Maine area and they have a bucket that is provided by a company that comes around and collects it separately from your other solid waste. So there are models in place. I know there's a similar kind of system over in Connecticut and some of the municipalities. So we should be able to reach out to them and find out how they keep these entities going because obviously they gotta break even or they gotta be subsidized, but we should be able to find places that successfully do the composting of, of food materials.
And I think the idea is, you know, part of what, it, it, and again, you know, it's a, it's a line, it's a budget issue and it's an issue that town meeting will look at, but, you know, if somebody has this as their, if, you know, if somebody is even part-time focused on solid waste, that's something that they, you know, they, again, they can be proactive. They can look at lots of options. It's, it's, I think, challenging for, it's hard enough to maintain what we have, never mind looking at some radical changes for, say, Peter McConerty, who this is, you know, really falls under his list of many, many things that he's responsible for. So. Sandy?
Hi. Sandy Fama Silva, Davis Road. I must be a lot older than the rest of you here because I remember in my house in Connecticut, we had a cast iron bucket that was buried in the ground in our backyard and it was called, it was Garbage Pit and we threw the garbage in there and we had garbage men, so-called, who came around and picked up the garbage once a week. It was separated from the trash. This was a very common occurrence in the fifties and before.
You remember, right?
They had that in East Providence too with my grandparents.
Yep, we had it everywhere. No, I'm the grandma, seventy-two, so I guess it was a while ago, but it doesn't seem that long ago. So if we wanna return to that, we can do that, but my issue is proposals to deal with education. We need to get the schools involved, first of all, and I did talk with someone, one of the assistant superintendents of the Falmouth Public Schools, I'm not sure what her name was, but ran into her at the farmer's market and suggested that we have a K through twelve curriculum in public and private schools in Falmouth and everywhere to educate kids so they can go home and educate their parents. And it has to be a systematic educational program that reinforces the knowledge from year to year and helps the whole community learn about recycling and the importance of it and how we do it. So I think that we are really missing the boat. Another, another proposal, and I was going to possibly do a Warren article on all of this so it would become mandated, was to include in either tax bills or water bills a pamphlet about the rules regarding recycling in Falmouth. So once a year, all Falmouth residents, and probably the water bills would be better because tax bills often go to banks, it was pointed out to me. So once a year, all town residents would be given a pamphlet reminding them. Another course of action can be penalties. So if, so the, the pickup company would put a note on your trash if it didn't comply with the, with the rules of, of the recycling rules. If there was plastic in there, dirty bottles, whatever, you got a note. You got, you know, it was rejected. It says rejected, so you, you don't get it picked up that week. Or you can do a monetary penalty. So people get penalized monetarily for not complying. So there are, there is power. We have power. We just need to exercise it.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Linda, wanna come up?
Linda Davis, Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I didn't really plan to speak tonight. I thought I would listen and learn something. Now, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, appointed by the selectmen, are here to make recommendations on solid municipal waste and related topics. Over the years since nineteen eighty-nine, this committee has made many recommendations repeatedly. There are a lot of good ideas out there, a lot of good strategies. Some of you mentioned some. There are communities who are successful doing waste and trash and recycling. We have, this committee has collected information about all kinds of communities and what they're doing, whether it's a place such as Nantucket or Martha's Vineyard close by. We have made these recommendations. We have no staff. We have no budget and we certainly can't make decisions. That's in your hands. I admire, I admire these people such as Barbara and others who are tired of seeing litter and trash around, who are tired of not knowing what they should put into their recycling bin or their waste barrels. We are tired of that. Thank goodness there happens to be people in this community who care about the community, who are willing to come forward, take it on, upon themselves, go out and seek the money, no less, for these, these posters. It's a shame that we are not, as a town, doing what we should do. You people need to lead and management needs to get in the act also. And that said, no more lip service. We've asked for a recycling bylaw. Where did that go? Am I responsible for calling that meeting? I'm a volunteer. All I can do is put the ideas of my, mine and my committee in your hands. Are they all viable? No one even questions whether they are or not because you give us lip service. It's, the town should be embarrassed. And what was really embarrassing, as most of you know, is that we have been delivering to the Bourne Waste Management Facility who monitors our recycling and our trash. We have been violating state regulations on what to do with our trash and recycling. They've checked it there. There are loads coming back to us. We can be fined because there's state regulations that indicate what we can do and cannot do. No one is paying attention. Forcement of contract, who's paying attention? We are going to, we are going to negotiate in a few short years, a contract for curbside pickup. Is anybody thinking about that? Is anybody looking at the options? We're gonna have to sit down and, and deal with a hauler. We know that things have changed. We know things are expensive. Who's looking ahead? Who's protecting the taxpayer there? And who is looking to see that we do the best we can with our waste? The state wants us to work towards zero waste. What are we doing? I cannot make decisions. I cannot spend money. I can help to get that money and this committee got money this year from the state. We got the highest award of all the Cape towns because we worked for that. What are we doing with that money? Well, you know, we could do this, we could do that. Who is making this decisions? Who's really leading the research that needs to be done, which is very easy, and making those recommendations? Who's doing that? So I, I'm sorry I have to say this to you people, but I mean, it's, it's the truth. Lead, make it a priority and figure out who's gonna do the work. If it's not a solid waste division with a solid waste manager, what can work? What can work? How can you make a person responsible for what really needs to be done? It's about time to move on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on that issue?
Can we follow up and just ask who is working on that long-range planning?
Our Deputy Public Works Director. Yeah, that falls within his job responsibility. He's working on the plan and implementing the, the grant that's been referred to.
And when, when would you expect there to be an update?
I can, I can ask him to come and speak to the board next month. Happy to do so.
On our September sixth, is it September nineteenth?
Well, let me, give me a little latitude to work out the date.
All right, we have discussed public input process for proposed consolidated Northwest Falmouth Fire Station.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the update on that. As boards aware, we've engaged the consultant that was, has been funded by Town Meeting to undertake that analysis for locations, potential locations for the merged service provided by Northwest Falmouth Fire Station as proposed, that would merge the functions of both the existing North and West Fire Station. If all goes as planned in the September, October timeframe, we would anticipate a community meeting based upon draft information. The consultant has been here on extended site visit already. And then we bring to the Board of Selectmen a final report following that at a public meeting with the board. In the meantime, we would welcome emails or letters suggesting alternative sites to be considered by that consultant, who as I noted, is gonna come forward with several alternative sites for consideration for station location. As town manager, I would hope with the board's concurrence, of course, that we might be able to go to Town Meeting as early as November, seeking authority to at least option what might be deemed the most appropriate location so that this process can, can move forward. Because once we talk about alternative locations, I think we're all aware what happens is the price of real estate goes up and we would like to be able to move forward with at least setting aside or engaging as an option some property that would allow this to go forward most cost effectively. So that is a process that is underway and the consultant has been engaged.
Any comments or questions about that?
I'm sorry, when did you say the consultant might be expected to complete his preliminary?
First, there'd be in the September, October timeframe, a community meeting on a draft, draft final results from the consultant, then a final report to the Board of Selectmen following that, after the community meeting and the opportunity to take that additional public input into account. The consultant is studying three years' worth of responses for public safety. In other words, those are fire EMS within the entire town, but also focusing in the north and west, but looking at the entire town in an effort to better balance the workload between our existing stations and make, make us much more efficient in that regard. So that's sort of the timeframe we're looking at.
Yep, Sam?
Were you suggesting that there'd be an article in November?
That would be my hope. An article that would allow this Town Manager to option property, working with a Board of Selectmen that would be determined to be, uh, most appropriate as a potential station location.
So, we would put a placeholder in, and then the details would come together over September and October?
Correct.
Okay, good.
A quick point about the timing. I, I note that Dan Shear, who's a member of the West Falmouth Village Association, is here in the audience. But this seems to be happening at a time when lots of summer residents won't know anything about it. So, I'm just looking for ideas for outreach in terms of providing, you know, folks who, who might be leaving September first with information about this study and where the number's coming from, and opportunities for outreach in a meaningful way, you know, when they might be elsewhere in the country.
Well, we're asking for emails and letters from any, the, the study is just looking at consolidated station locations. That's exclusively what's being looked at. So, we welcome any and all input from persons who are listening to this broadcast tonight to email or send us letters on their thoughts.
Another thought is what also might be helpful is if we sort of, you know, summarize what we've just talked about this evening, about what the study's gonna be, about the timeline, and maybe through the, um, some of the village associations, you, you know, get that information out before people go, so that we can, uh, make sure that if people aren't watching tonight, because this isn't like the hot show for everyone, that, um, that they maybe have a heads up. And obviously, we hope it, it gets into the, um, the paper as well, but we don't control that. But, um, um, although we certainly can control that by putting out, um, you know,
Press release.
Yeah, press release, so that people understand what's going on. But I think the, um, associations can be helpful. If we have something specific that we can give to them, where the, the message is very clear, what, what's happening, what we're looking at, the, um, anticipated timeline, and the ways to contact, um, the town to provide that information, I think that would be helpful. Dan, did you just want to comment on that piece quickly? Or we'll give it to, give it to Dan, and Dan will go door-to-door and?
Well, I won't go door-to-door, but I think I, I can get it to the Village Association, and I can get it in our newsletter and, and so forth, if you could get it to me. Can I say one other thing? And this is going back to Chappaquaig Beach. I hate to see you spend lots of money if you're not gonna nourish it. At High Tide, we have, we cannot, uh, beach a, a good portion of the people that are there. I don't have percentages, but they're sitting on the rocks with water breaking over them, what they're sitting in the parking lot. There isn't any beach down there anymore. And I think before we go in and spend money and everything else, we've got to decide if we're gonna do something about sand there.
I'll take you to the parking lot.
It's a valid point.
Thank you. And if we can just try to make sure we get something together sooner rather than later to maybe get to the association, so that that can
Certainly, happy to.
Kind of just, as, reach as many people as we can, so that folks can share their thoughts or concerns with us. Great. Is this about this, the fire station? Okay.
Sorry, I stepped out for a minute. So, are, are you looking at consolidating West and North Falmouth into one?
That's what the feasibility study is.
How, might I ask, if we have a problem with response times, with the physical locations of the stations that we have, and the most unserved area has always been Hatchville, I don't see how rearranging this furniture is gonna improve response times, and I guess maybe we'll have to wait and see. But I, I just don't see how you can im- improve your coverage by reducing, um, your coverage. I don't know, it just.
So, I think, yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, who pays more attention to what the town is doing than Mark? And this is the first he's hearing, so that's the point about the outreach.
Well, I've been talking about a Hatchville station for whatever, years. And I mean, that was always what they wanted. They planned for it twenty-five, thirty years ago, and, I mean, it was Ranch Road, basically. And that was in addition to what we have.
So, this consultant is look, going to look at lots of different, at, at some potential spots where a station could be that could address all, it's not just looking at the issues that are in West or North Falmouth. It's looking, this individual has looked at, has been to all of the stations, is looking all of the data, town-wide, um, response times, where most of the responses go to, or where most of the calls go to. Um, and, you know, they're gonna have that in front of them.
One, um, and, and just one more, uh, thing. It would be nice, and I, I heard this from somebody else, for us to actually quantify how many of our calls go to, like Atria and, um, the senior facilities in town. And, um, you know, I, I know they're all taxpayers and everything, but, I mean, maybe they should be required to do a little bit more. I don't know. I, it's obviously a problem. It's been a problem for a long time.
Part of this feasibility study, just to address some of your question, Mark, um, is to take a look at what an effective fire station should be. I mean, you're talking about historic facilities right now. What should we have for an adequate fire station that has the right kind of equipment, that can house the appropriate number of, of first responders? That's part of this study, and that cannot be overlooked, because modern technology has jumped way ahead, and fire, modern fire trucks don't go into West Falmouth Station. And that's the problem that we're looking at, in addition to, how far is it? How far is it? You better show up with the right equipment and appropriate number of responders. So, that's part of this whole picture as well.
In fact, we do call them fire stations as opposed to fire and rescue stations, where a vast majority of our calls are not fire calls.
That's exactly right.
They're all, they're, it's all response. It's all response.
Right.
And but still, we're talking about fire stations.
I understand, but, but that's why we need to get somebody else to come in and look at it, the whole picture, and all the needs, and, and the, the most effective way to respond to those needs in the community.
And that's what, I mean, that's what this study is. And that's the, that's the data that they have in front of them, and they certainly, they understand the particularities of each one of our stations, because, you know, the individual who's, who's assisting for part of this, who has a long history in, in, in fire, um, and rescue, came and took a look at all of these. So, that, that's what we're hoping to glean from this study, to, you know, address exactly those issues. It's not just response time, it's what are you responding in, how many people are you responding with, so?
But, but the response time is the primary concern.
Yes, yep.
And we may find out that the consultant just comes in and says, your geographical area is just too big, and you're gonna need two.
It's not just time. It's what equipment shows up, what resources show up.
I'm not saying it's just.
Time might not be the critical factor.
It's effective response. If you respond, but you do not have the proper equipment, you've not helped anyone.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that is, that is an issue for us
It's one factor.
in West and North Falmouth, quite frankly. And it's part of what the consultant's gonna look at. And I'd be remiss if I didn't, just for the record, confirm that this was presented to Town Meeting many months ago, and Town Meeting, uh, voted money to do this.
Absolutely.
It was, it was discussed and presented at the Town Meeting level, and this is the next step.
And definitely, and we should definitely do it. That's planned, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't be surprised if he comes back and says one isn't gonna do it. But we'll see.
But we'll see. I mean, they have all of the data, but I think, you know, the, the point is just that we, you know, we've been kicking this issue around for a long time, and the study is the first step in really coming up with an effective, um, you know, slate of solutions. There, there may not be one option that's presented, but, um, we certainly have to just move forward with the in-Town Meeting obviously appropriated those funds, so. Anything else about that? The biggest piece is just to make sure we try and get that outreach to the community.
We'll do.
And I, just a quick thing. We should have the charge for the consultant when we discuss this, so folks know exactly what they're looking at. For example, does it include Mark's question or not? That kind of thing.
So, in other words, and so summarize what the charge of the consultant is.
Put it up on the screen, or, or put it on the website.
Can I just?
Yep, Mark, go ahead.
I hate to belabor the issue, but, I, I mean, the, the biggest issue has always been response times and, uh, the need for a station in Hatchville, and, and to call this, uh, or to use the word consolidating, I, 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 how can you consolidate when, 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 you're gonna reduce the number of stations and improve response times? It's just not possible.
You're, you're improving the effective response times. Right now, response timing from West Falmouth isn't effective, because it's one person who can't do anything. So, one person shows up.
Well, if a guy shows up with a defibrillator and, and, and you're in cardiac arrest, I mean, that one guy's enough. I mean, you don't need a fire truck to save a life. I mean.
Right. Well, I think, again, we're gonna take, that's what this, this study's gonna look at. Response time, effectiveness, all of that. I mean, I understand what you're, I understand the point that you're making, but I think there's, you know, there's a lot of complexity to it, and that's what we're gonna hopefully see when we take a look at it.
It would be nice if we had someone all the time in West Falmouth. I'd like to know what percentage of time is in summer.
Well, we'll get some information for you on that. Okay. All right. So, hopefully, we'll get that out there and get some input from individuals. Meetings of minutes. Public session of July twenty-second, twenty nineteen. Do they have any corrections or?
Well, I move approval and release for public access. I review them, they seem to be.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And individual selectmen reports?
One thing I thought I was gonna head up. So, I worked out on a, sort of a mock or a skeleton version of what the schedule for the year could look like with the things we typically do and when we can invite committees to come in. And Diane's gonna take a look at this, and then we can all edit it. I don't want to discuss it at all tonight.
Two pages.
It's two pages, but just list, and just so you understand, when it says January one, two, and three, that means the first meeting in January, the second meeting in January, and third meeting in January. Uh, just, I didn't randomly assign committees to different dates, but tried to act to be thoughtful as to when they might come in.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Thank you for doing that. And the goal, again, is, is, um, really to try and have that year calendar to make sure we're touching base with all of the committees, that they know when they're supposed to present, so that it just creates that pattern of communication. So, thank you for putting that together, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Madam Chair, can I just clarify for, for, uh, just for, uh, Diane's, uh, to be fair to Diane, she has a working list just like this. She worked on it the current calendar year, and, and she advised, you know, obviously, there's some adjustments here, which we very much appreciate from Doug in terms of his insight and thoughts on this as well. But the, uh, Diane has been working steadfastly with all these committees and different dates, and part of the challenge has been postponements, cancellations, uh, some committees declining to come, or, et cetera. So, I just wanted to share with you that, um, there's not been in, any absence whatsoever in Diane's effort in this behalf of working for the Board of Selectmen. But I know she very much welcomes, I forwarded this to her earlier today, uh, from, uh, Selectmen Jones, very much welcomes these other, these thoughts and suggestions as well.
And I actually would defer, to any dates that Diane has, I would defer to, and, and no way was I suggesting this wasn't happening. I was actually trying to support what she was doing, so if any of these committees complained about it, we could say, nope, actually, the selectmen have determined that you're coming that day, um, be here, because that's the date you're given.
That kind of affirmation would be huge.
Right, and that's what I was mostly looking for.
Thank you, Doug.
I, I took it that way. I mean, just have, publicizing something like this, so people can plan ahead and, you know, and make it more of a regular thing. I think it's, uh, really well worth it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Team, team effort.
Note that I don't see the school department included in this list, and I think that's such a large part of our budget.
I have that on December first.
Yeah, I'm sorry. December first?
I thought after the November Town Meeting.
Oh, assessors.
Two different groups.
And school committee. Yep, got it. Sorry, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, any other selectmen's report? Doug, did you have some?
Yep, I went to the, uh, Beach Department's, uh, awards night. That was really fun. The kids really enjoyed that. They are having such a great time congratulating each other, and really, it was just a great, really positive event.
Supported by the, uh, Race Committee, they got a grant.
Yeah, the Falmouth Road Race supported that. That was really excellent. As I mentioned earlier, I attended the C Education, uh, swizzle over there. That was a very enlightening, great program. Uh, one thing I noticed also this week was, I've seen a lot of comments about people not getting their recycling picked up. I don't know how wide of a problem it is beyond the comments that I've seen, but I wonder if maybe it might be a time to call the, uh, managers and just remind them that there's been repeated missed recycling.
So, I can tell you that, um,
Megan's already reached out on that.
Yeah, I reached out, and I asked, um, Julian, um, and Ray Jack and Peter McCarty to get an answer and to invite somebody to one of our meetings from Republic to address this, because we have gotten responses in some similar areas to just no pickup repeatedly. So, um, they are doing that, so we can speak to someone directly about it.
I also noticed that they've actually changed their timetable a little bit. If you, you assumed they were gonna come out at eight and didn't put your stuff out in time, they
They're zipping by at seven.
They're zipping by at seven, because, uh, they're saying, well, they weren't, they knew they were gonna have more than usual, so they probably started their contract on a little different schedule to hit more people. And then they get missed, they say, well, I didn't pick up my trash, and then, well, it wasn't out in time.
And conversely, they're coming later in North Falmouth now, so things are changing for some reason.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that, that's where some of that, that communication, educational piece goes. Because, I mean, a lot of people don't, in the summer especially, put the recycling out till the morning, because they're afraid of, you know, either the wind or animals knocking it all over. And, um, so, I think, you know, we just, we need to hear from them about what's going on and, and address that, so. Anything else? I just wanted, anything else, Doug?
No, that's it.
Nope, okay. Yep, Sam?
I just, I wanted to for, report a little bit further on the K-COT Summit, uh, because I attended that, um, at the end of, of July, but I wasn't here, uh, to report on. Uh, first day was the environment, and I kinda summarized that to some extent. Uh, there is a lot of progress and cooperation, and certainly, there are some sewer systems going on. Chatham has put in extensive sewer systems, and so there is some progress that's being made. It's just that we don't see any evidence yet that we've made an improvement, and that was the point I was trying to make. And there's, you know, the, the significant contributions are all very compactly located. I mean, we put sewer systems in, we've expanded that, but the source of the prob, problem is so distributed that we can't be confident at this point that we're actually gonna end up with a significant positive impact. And so, that's kind of the unfortunate side effect. But we had representatives from the state, from, obviously, from the Cape and Islands, and from the federal EPA, all coming and talking about it. And they all say we're, we're moving in the right direction, but in terms of progress, we have to be sober about it. You know, the challenges are huge. Uh, the second day is, is basi- basically was build the economy, but everything kept coming back to housing, and it's the impact that the lack of affordable housing is gonna be having on the economic vitality. All of the dynamics that are causing these problems, the second homes, the, uh, you know, summer transients who don't occupy their houses for the rest of the year. They do pay taxes, but, um, it, you know, it does take the house out of the market, and therefore, it's not available to somebody who would provide the services. And of course, there's the whole question of supply and demand and the impact on that. So, uh, you know, it begs the question, we discussed it at our, um, strategic planning meeting, of where does government need to say, come in and take some of this, can, out of the, the realm of the private market, where it's, you know, where they're, you know, supply and demand only, you know, do we have a, a role to play? Those were all questions that were being raised. Anyway, so, like, I guess that's the sobering thoughts, but, uh, certainly, a lot of people putting in a lot of time and effort, a lot of plans being generated. We, we're not seeing anything significant to show for it. Anyway, then, and I don't mean to make this too gloomy, because certainly, what we're seeing in the, in affordable housing here in Falmouth is significant, and our Water Quality Management Committee is making some significant advances. Money, of course, is the pacing item in many of these cases, and something we have to look at seriously. Alternative sources of revenue. I, I also attended a site visit by Lieutenant Governor Polito and, uh, the new Secretary of the Housing and Community Development, Mike Kenealy, came and looked at the two, uh, Falmouth Housing Corporation sites, the one Spring Bars Road, which is under construction, and also, they took a peek at the workforce housing up on Gifford Street, just the site for it and the plans that are, are in the process. So, that was kind of an, an interesting opportunity to talk to them and talk about our problems and relationship to the, the, the state's priorities. And they certainly have helped us out in terms of subsidies for both of those projects. And the last thing I did want to mention, I, I attended the East Falmouth Village Association Meeting, and I was very impressed with the leadership of Doug, of course, being key in that, but also, you know, Marion, uh, Hallward and her husband, and a whole host of other people, even, um, Melissa O'Keefe, who came to talk who came and talked about their, uh, relationship to T-Ticket and East Falmouth Schools. So they feel- PTO, I mean, they're, basically, they're looking at all the elements of their community and the social environment, and not only that, but the the infrastructure issues as well. I was very impressed, because they're very proactive in thinking about all of these things. So it was, uh, refreshing to see people looking at their issues in such a broad way and asking the question, what can we do about it, and and making some significant contributions as well. That's it.
Thank you. Pass.
Can I comment on one more thing?
Yep.
It wasn't actually officially a selectman business, but at the last Falmouth Water stewards meeting, our board voted to, uh, pay the money and do the testing of, uh, Gruce Pond and Deep Pond for cyanobacteria, because it's a new-
Yes.
-public health concern, and I don't think, uh, Barnstable County's only coming, or the APCC, APCC is only coming as far as Mashpee. They're testing a lot in the Barnstable and other areas. So we're gonna start with these two and just get a sense of what we have in Falmouth, if it's really a current threat.
Great.
I actually have a question as to whether we got any report back from the mosquito testing of these traps. When they were here for our meeting with the Board of Health, um, before the spraying, there was, I guess, I thought we'd get some little more information as to what those tests came back, as to whether we had any more positive results.
My understanding is that the other areas sampled have all come back negative.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have the, uh, results yet from the spraying of last week. We're still awaiting that. Um, but as I think the board had seen, uh, we had some concerns raised because the first time in on truck-mounted targeted spraying, but it seemed to go, uh, generally well, and, uh, as respectfully as we could with those property owners that asked not to be sprayed. So, uh, we are pleased that the additional areas in the community that were sampled came back negative, um, and we're, we're awaiting the results on-
Do we have any general ideas to where those areas were?
Uh, I don't, but I'll get that information out to the board.
Great, thank you.
Were there any reports of any unintended consequences, like butterfly kills or anything like that?
We haven't, as a board, haven't received anything.
None have come back to me.
I haven't seen or heard any comments like that.
No, I I didn't.
I've heard comments that, wow, I'm glad the bees are doing terrifically. Yeah.
Um, the one thing I just, just a quick, uh, future agenda.
Megan, before, there was a recent, um, news article that they did have a positive hit in Born, though.
Yes.
So just north of us, you know, they're, they discovered a-
They came from Tripoli.
Yep, Tripoli there. So it's not like we're still, you know, we've gotten virus.
Yeah, I mean, people still need to exercise all the caution that we discussed.
And it can be reintroduced so easily, uh, by a bird flying through that's carrying that particular virus.
Um, just a future, something I'd like us to take a look at. I was speaking with someone who works for, um, Cape Cod Commission around transportation, and they were just talking about how, um, they live in Falmouth, and they were just talking about how they certainly are happy to help work with us around some of these issues, um, you know, the crossing, you know, just in terms of interfacing with the state, if we need any assistance, and just making sure that our, some of these projects get over the hump, that the Cape Cod Commission can assist with in any way, that that, that's a resource in terms of transportation studies. Um, we were speaking specifically about, um, cycling, but just in general, um, I couldn't recall work that we had done in collaboration with the commission recently.
Well, the Main Street project was one that they co-funded with us.
I I mean, I guess, I guess I mean for some of the other, some of these other issues that have kind of lingered around, um, transportation, especially around bikeways. So just a thought that it might be another resource to draw from that can assist with some, um, some of that, you know, heavy lifting that we might need done.
I'd love to see if we can get some, uh, movement on the Palmer Ave.
Right.
Goodwill Park.
Right. They were just saying, you know, they're, those individuals are pointing out that they, on a regular basis, are speaking with Mass DOT, you know, because obviously, they're talking about Cape-wide different projects. So they're happy to kind of be a resource if we need that, just, you know, nudging around some of those. I know the town is already doing some of that, obviously, but they're happy to be a resource, um, and for us to take advantage of that.
We're happy to have them help. On Goodwill Park, we don't need that assistance from the Cape Cod Commission, because one of the confusing elements has been too many cooks in the broth. So, um, Public Works continues to report that's going ahead well. We have a plan. It's been transmitted to Mass DOT, and Mass DOT has been attentive and responsive, and we're going in, I believe, exactly the direction the selectmen had ordained. So, uh, we're inclined to keep a good thing going there.
Maybe Peter can come and speak to that at some point, just to update on that, so folks know. 'Cause we, you know, I think the public doesn't hear that, and then they wonder, you know, where that that is at, with that project.
I can assure everyone, this board gave out a clear direction, and we're following it. You can be assured of that. We're not varying from it, and I'm very optimistic, but happy to provide.
Yeah, I think people, if they hear the specifics about sort of where the project is at.
Certainly.
And on the other side of Goodwill Park, the, uh, managing of the number of cars seems to have had some positive impact as well, right?
Thankfully, yes. Yeah, and I know we communicated with the board on steps we had to take early in the summer season to, um, limit the number of attendees who could park there within the capacity of, frankly, that park to support that number of individuals. So thankfully, that's had a very positive impact, including the swimming beach there. But as the board has seen, when we reach capacity on the parking lot, we close the gate.
Right.
And, um, we, uh, we were overtaxing the resources the first time or two through. So we're happy to be at that point, and we appreciate the selectman's support for that, and recognizing that we wish these, um, natural resources were unlimited, and we could put in as, as many people, uh, sort of like we did this past weekend downtown, with probably a hundred and fifty thousand people in town. You know, with an infrastructure that supports thirty-one thousand, it pushes us to the limit. So, um, we're thankful we don't have to do that in all the, in all the towns' parks throughout the whole summer as well. So I know, I know this board understands that.
Town managers' report, if anybody, okay?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items, just to, is in the past, again, then another item that we report periodically to the board, uh, with mid-August, the beach staffing begins to automatically throttle back, giving return to colleges and related commitments for our, uh, highly capable staff, and and, uh, we've already begun, uh, to have to cut back on, uh, Stony Be- Old Stony Beach and Bagansett Beach and and others. And that trend, of course, will continue through the month of August, and we try and maintain staffing, uh, if at all possible, at Old Silver Beach, obviously, the, our most popular and most heavily used, um, facility, as, as long as resources allow. So we'll continue to, uh, update the board on that. We've touched on mosquito spraying a little bit. Uh, we'll have more information coming on that as it becomes available. I wa- I was pleased to attend the Falmouth Cable Advisory Committee meeting. They hosted a meeting today at five P M. At FCTV, which, um, was a little daunting to, I had to leave early, of course, to join the, um, selectmen for the site visit at the high school, uh, field, but I was able to be there for an hour and take in some of the presentation by Michael Mail from the, uh, Mass Department of Telecommunications. And also, um, I want to thank, um, everyone, particularly Public Safety and Public Works, uh, for their extraordinary, uh, work over the weekend, uh, Road Race Weekend. As noted, it taxes us to the limit, um, but our staff, people have always stepped up, and they did it once again. And congratulations to the, uh, Road Race Committee for their fine and collaborative work as well. So a lot of good things happened and, uh, had a good outcome. I can attest that four A M, Woods Hole was awfully foggy and awfully humid. It was ninety-eight percent humidity down there, and, uh, it continued to be fairly humid. Uh, but we were fine until the sun came out. When the sun came out, uh, I know I saw Sam, I believe, was volunteering at the Heights, uh, field. I saw him, uh, from a distance later in the day. We didn't have a chance to exchange pleasantries, but it was, it was a great day, uh, very busy, but, uh, great outcomes, and, uh, just extraordinary people, including all the, uh, medical people that did such a fine job on a, a day that, as I say, became very challenging when the sun came out with the high humidity. But, uh, well done once again, and my compliments to all.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, but it brings so much to the town. Look at all the things that that road race funds with the grant opportunities. The Water Kiesk and the one on Pignewan Park, that was them. They funded the banquet for the, uh, beach department.
They're a great steward to this, with this community, so.
And I should mention that, um, while we do have professional management now, there's a huge number of people that turn out and volunteer.
Yes.
You know, I was there as part of a crew from Rotary Club, but there were a huge number of other volunteer groups, and, and they all get some kind of a contribution to their particular, you know, not pro- non-for-profit, uh, efforts of, from the Road Race Committee, so. But it is a community-wide support effort. Pretty impressive.
Definitely. Mr. Johnson Staub, anything from you?
That's a good note to end on.
Okay.
I move adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.